Harding.
Here.
Hug. Johnson. Melton. Rowe. Bagley. Mr. President.
Here. Please stand for the pledge and invocation. I just wanted to say that it seems like we've lost a lot of notable Americans in the last several weeks. We're gonna talk about a notable South Omaha in here in a minute. But two other folks I thought that deserved mentioning today on a national scale were Charlie Munger and Rosalyn Carter. So I just wanted to note Charlie Munger, of course, an Omaha native and Central High School graduate who went on to become obviously very famous internationally and in the investment world, together with his partner Warren Buffett. One cannot overstate the impact Berkshire Hathaway has had on our community here in Omaha and on philanthropy, and certainly with the annual meetings they had and the economic impact of that every year, known, of course, for his valuable insights in the investment world, but also his quick wit. Secondly, Rosalyn Carter, not a direct Omaha connection to my knowledge, but former First Lady, of course, and I think a great example of a servant leader her whole life. I felt that worth, that deserved recognition. And then also, a bit of a personal note, we are distant relatives of Jimmy Carter in my family on my mom's side, and my youngest daughter's middle name is Carter. So we felt, we wanted to mention her today. Thank you.
An affidavit publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting, and a current copy of the meeting act is posted in the white binder in the East Wall of legislative chambers.
Good afternoon, welcome to the Omaha City Council. We appreciate having you here today. We look forward to hearing your testimony on our many items. We'd encourage you to turn your cell phones to vibrate, or preferentially turn them off. Mr. Bagley, I believe you have a proclamation for us.
Whereas John A. Stella was born to first-generation Italian immigrants in 1935 in a small house at 22nd Poplin Street, where he grew up as the middle of three boys in a home shared with his maternal grandparents, graduated from South High School in 1953, and was known for his dedication and leadership to the community. And whereas John dedicated a total of nine years of playing baseball for South High and the American Legion from 1951 to 53, Omaha University from 54 to 57, and for the St. Louis, the San Francisco Giants Organization from 1958 to 1959, before enlisting in United States Army Reserves and working for the United States Postal Service for 33 years from 1959 until his retirement in 1992. And whereas John impacted an estimated 1,000 student athletes over more than 45 years as a baseball coach for St. Anne's, CYO assistant coach for South High, and head coach for American Legion teams, always maintaining his goal was to try and teach the kids the game and get them to the next level, whether it was college or the pros. And whereas John received numerous awards over the years, including being named the Nebraska Baseball Coaches Association Man of the Year, Outstanding Italian American of the Year by the Sons of Italy, the National High School Baseball Coach Association District Five Assistant Coach of the Year, the 2003 Service Award from the American Legion Post Number One, Honorary President of the Santa Lucia Festival in 2014, an achievement award from the Nebraska Iowa Old Timers Association, and was honored as an Admiral in the Navy of the State of Nebraska. And whereas being a second-generation Italian American with a salient identity for him, and John devoted most of his time to activities connected with baseball and preserving his Italian heritage through the Sons of Italy, the Santa Lucia Festival Committee, and the American Italian Heritage Society. And whereas John passed away on December 1st, 2023, at the age of 88 years old, leaving behind four beloved children, seven grandchildren, and seven great-grandchildren. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Omaha recognizes John Stella's many contributions to the City of Omaha and officially designate Saturday, December 9th, 2023, as John A. Stella Day. In witness whereof, we have set our hands and cause the official seal of the City of Omaha to be a fix on this 12th day of December 2023. Thanks, Mr. President.
Thank you. A South Omaha original, right? Madam Clerk. Is there a, is there a member of Mr. Stella's family, a representative? Oh, please come down. Yes, yes. You're welcome to take the podium and provide any comments you'd like. Yeah, thanks for being here. Yes.
Nope, he was unable to make it today.
I work at OPPD, I know he retired, he was a retiree there. So your dad was a great, I mean, he touched so many lives in South Omaha in the community of baseball, so the floor is all your gentlemen's. You have our deepest condolences for a life well-lived for your father.
Thank you. Councilman Bagley, that's exactly right. Statement, I'm Tim Lekowski, I played for John, was a friend of his for years, and was with him during that difficult last month. I'm honored to have with me Randy Stella, his grandson, played at the University of Nebraska Omaha in UNL, and his grandson Matt McClintock, who played at Millard West, and is honored to be here today as well. We thank you for the proclamation, your time, and recognizing John in this stature.
Please. And I can tell you, Brown Park was renamed after John. It's beautiful, you drive by there and you see it's in Councilmember Hug's district, and that's a tribute to the life he lived and the gift that he gave of his time and his immense love of the game of baseball and just helping kids in general. So I'm gonna hand you this and please pass along our condolences on behalf of the city. He's gone, but he's never gonna be forgotten. He had a, as they say on NBC in the mornings on Sundays, "A life well-lived" that is John Stella and the City of Omaha. Thanks for coming down.
The only thing that I would add is, we want John's legacy and his mission to the city. He never charged a young man to play baseball. We're in the works with the foundation to continue to give scholarship and assistance, not only to the South Omaha area, but across the city of Omaha. And we'd appreciate your support when it comes to that, and we thank you all for your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Which foundation was that again?
It's going to be the John Stella Bill Olson Foundation, and we're currently in the works of finalizing it with its 501(c)(3) status. But the first six young people will receive scholarships mid-January of this year.
You wanna make sure you apply for fireworks permit next year.
Okay, we'll take care of that. Thanks, Ron.
Madam Clerk.
Item six, to consider a class C liquor license for Vincenzo's Restaurant located at 15701 Pacific Street.
Public hearing and vote on number six is today. We have the applicant by Zoom, I believe.
Yeah, Michael Frank on behalf of Vincenzo's.
Okay.
And I believe our attorney is gonna be zooming in.
Okay. Is that Ms. Bogan?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Ms. Bogan, would you like to speak? We'll get you off mute there. Go ahead.
Good afternoon. Yes, this is Nicole Bogan. My address is 800 Lincoln Square, 121 South 13th Street in Lincoln, Nebraska. And I am here on behalf of Vincenzo's Inc., and then appearing there is our manager, Michael Frank, who is also the former president of Vincenzo's Ristorante since 1993. And we're here as proponents for the liquor license application for Vincenzo's Inc. from a Class I to a Class C. And Mr. Frank, is there in person to answer any questions that you might have about the restaurants or about the change in the liquor license application? We're both here available to you.
Great, thank you. Any other proponents that wanna speak today on number six? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed? There's a motion, a second to approve, roll call.
Harding. Hug. Johnson. Melton. Rowe. Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, good luck.
Consent agenda, any member of the city council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following the consent agenda and the order in which they were removed, unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order.
The public hearing on agenda item number seven was held on December 5th. I don't see any further lights, is there a motion? Motion, a second to approve, roll call.
Harding. Hug. Johnson. Melton. Rowe. Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Councilmembers, item number 17 has been withdrawn, so it is withdrawn. So the public hearings on agenda items eight through 16 and 18 through 39 are today. If anyone is here and wishes to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by name, address, and who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent, this is eight through 16 and 18 through 39.
Larry Store, 501-5 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha 68132. I'm a little confused by your rules, so I'll basically start off with, I'm really opposed to all of them, but specifically items number 20, 21, 24, 26, 27, 32, 34, 36, and 37. Do I have to speak about all of them right now, or just one at a time?
Right now, yeah.
All of them right now?
Yeah.
How much time are you gonna give me? I'll tell you what, I'll just pass. You need to alter your rules so it's more clear for citizens. I really want to, I guess I'll just oppose all of them, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other testifiers on these items?
Police unit is 2709 Dew Avenue. I'm supporting Resolution 39, which has Sean P. Kelly and Julia M. Plucker of Kelly Plucker LLC as the designated lobbyists for the City of Omaha. I think that in your previous meetings, you've explained as to why these individuals would make, would make good lobbyists, and I agree with that. I'm glad that your previous setup, where you had your lobbyist working in the mayor's office, is no longer the case, and this is very timely since the legislature's gonna meet next month. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other testifiers on these items?
Good afternoon. I'm a proponent for item number nine. I'm here representing Jignes Panchel for the liquor license approval for 655 North 108 Avenue. Sorry, just wanna make sure that I addressed it, okay?
Thank you. Your name and address for the record?
Mike Cliff, CLI, FFE, 655 North 108th Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska 68154.
Thank you. Any other testifiers on these items? Seeing none, public hearing's closed? There's a motion, a second to approve these items, roll call.
Harding. Hug. Johnson. Melton. Rowe. Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 40, a resolution to approve the National League of Cities' membership dues in the amount of $25,931.
This item was postponed from the December 5th meeting. The public hearing was closed, and the vote is today. Councilmembers, are there any further lights or a motion? There's a motion to approve in a second? Roll call.
Harding. Hug. Johnson. Melton. Rowe. Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to one. Item 41, in order to approve a contribution agreement with the Mental Health Innovation Foundation and Children's Nebraska for the construction of the Behavioral Health and Welfare Center at Children's near 84th and Dodge Streets.
The public hearing on number 41 is today. I know we have the proponent by Zoom. Mr. Stinson will get you off mute here, here in a minute. Okay, I've asked Mr. Stinson to give us a brief overview of the project, and we'll have him go first.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President, and thank you for allowing me to be sharing a few thoughts and comments on our project with you virtually, as opposed to being there, so thanks for allowing that. I think probably everybody that's in the room is aware of the issue of mental health crisis in America, particularly for our young people. And it's really been going on for 20 years, probably, at least in my own opinion, it's not solely stated, but, or felt, but the cellphone has become both a very valuable tool to all of us and a very pervasive, has a very pervasive role in the healthcare of youth. You're all familiar with the social media uses and abuses of the cellphone and so forth. Anyway, that basically was, I think, at the origins of our current crisis, and it was, of course, amplified in, in the pandemic with the isolation of kids and, and all they had to go through to, you know, to deal with the crisis. I, just statistically, you've probably seen a lot of them, but emergency room, mental health emergency room visits, for example, are up 24%, and this is the last number of years for ages five to 11. I, we don't think about kids five to 11 going to emergency for mental health crisis, but it's a meaningful number. 12 to 17, up 31%. And of course, the thing that I think probably gets all of our attention more than anything else is the, the incidence and the rate of suicide ideation, suicide planning for youth, and the actual suicide rate itself. It's dramatically increased, and unfortunately, in Nebraska, our own trends are no better than, in some cases, worse than the national trends. Unfortunately, in America in general, our community included, we've really not done a good job of keeping pace with the, the treatment, effective treatment for these mental health issues that are incurred by our kids that are between, say, five and 18 years old, generally. Because of the emergence of this mental health crisis about three, four years ago, we started an initiative that was led by and still is the Mental Health Innovation Foundation, which is a 501(c)(3) established for justice, purpose, care of mental health for kids. And we initiated planning to both plan, oversee, design, the construction, and fundraising for a new, much-needed and very comprehensive mental health care facility that would serve the youth in our community. In mid-'22, we entered a partnership with Children's Nebraska wherein, when it's completed, the ownership of the new facility will be turned over to Children's and operated and maintained that facility thereafter. And a shout out for Shanda Chacon and her staff, who have been incredibly valuable partners in this whole process. So they don't take over responsibility till it's complete, but they've been huge partners in the planning process so far. You know, specifically, what is it that we are talking about when we say a comprehensive mental health care facility? Well, number one, it's sizable. It's 107,000 square feet with an estimated cost, a budget now of $110 million. And everything within it has been subject to a lot of research and what are the best practices today, and they're incorporated in our design, and construction's actually underway. We're gonna more than double the number of single occupancy inpatient beds, again, I'm talking five to 18-year-old kids, with the ultimate capacity of 38 beds. Again, more than double the existing capacity. I think a key new component that doesn't exist in our community is an assessment center wherein kids in severe crisis or kids coming in with parents who are concerned about some behavioral issues that might indicate mental health problems, this assessment center is gonna be about 10,000 square feet. It's, it's the only one we would have in this community, and there are not a lot of them frankly in the U.S. We'll also have a dramatic increase in, in the capacity of what's referred to as partial hospitalization. You may not be familiar with that, but that's where kids who are beyond the need of being an everyday inpatient and have more need than a periodic, every two weeks or a month, therapy session with their doctor, they come to a partial hospitalization in, 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 in our facility, five days a week, roughly eight hours a day, and they're getting both mental health therapy and continuing in their education, because all these kids are in school at one level or another. So that's an ongoing process. We'll have ability to support 40 kids, eight hours a day, five days a week, in this, in this new capacity. And that is partly and largely addressing a long waiting list for the existing facility that is at CHI, Allegiant. We also have an experimental kitchen for patients and families with eating disorders, which is another aspect of mental health that's on the rise. Over 14,000 square foot of outpatient therapy, pediatric care, and so forth. And we've provided, since feedback we got throughout the country in our research was, whatever someone built in their facility, they found fairly soon there were shortages of spaces in some areas, so we built in shell space to account for potential future, future growth. The facility will be on the Children's Campus, around around 84th and Dodge, which is a great central location for, with good transportation connection and so forth, for our kids in Omaha. The large, we've been raising the money for about a year and a half now. We're right at our $110 million target, mostly private dollars, there's some federal ARPA dollars, and we're asking, of course, the city for sharing in the, in the cost of the facility, and we'd appreciate your consideration for that. And with that, Mr. President, I can, if desirable, ask any, or answer any questions, by the way.
Thank you for the overview, overview, we appreciate it. We'll go to other proponents now and come back to you if we have further questions. Okay. All right, thank you. Other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Mr. Harding, you're recognized. Oh, sorry, are you, are you an opponent, Larry?
You need to look up.
I did, you're a little.
Larry Store, 501-5 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha 68132. I'm not against treatment for mental health, but what I am against is a lot of property in Omaha is suddenly disappearing for mental health reasons. Buildings, mental health buildings, more people. I'd like to ask the county and the city, why taxpayers maybe, I don't know how many of the city dollars are going into this, but why taxpayers are expected to help support so many things for mental health without understanding why the mental health providers here are not being successful? If the programs were successful working with the mental health needs people, why would we need all these facilities? The jail, the county corrections, this thing out here on 84th and Dodge, I don't know, is that that whole block going west of 84th? That's a pretty big complex. Children's has been in this business for a long time, and we have Child Saving Institute. We just took out 10 houses and a bank on Harney Street for parking lot for Child Saving Institute. There must be something going to be built there too, but they do mental health work. My grandson's been involved with social services and special ed and disability services for a lot of years. And a lot of these programs just are not successful. So why are we building more monstrous buildings? Even though the goodness of their heart, people are contributing money, but they're still asking for ARPA, they're still asking for some city, which has not disclosed how much the city is contributing. But there is a concept, a word called clawback. When you're using ARPA money, that's federal dollars, you're obligating yourself to the federal government, and they might clawback for their money for things that are not intended for ARPA COVID spending. And there has been an older gentleman that is a lawyer that has talked about that. So please be aware of that. What are you gonna do when I tell you, I'm not giving you the money that the federal government wants back for it? I didn't tell you to spend it. Thank you.
Thank you. Were there any other opponents on this item? Public hearing's closed. Mr. Harding, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, I'll start by saying, there's, there's a reason why there are so many of these facilities. It's because it's a huge issue. And I wanna, you know, addressing mental health is, you know, for some time, maybe we, we made it, we tried to hide it, and what we're doing now is bringing it to light and the, and the care that's so desperately needed. And I wanna thank the, the leadership, the vision, and the collaboration of Ken and Shandra Chacon for their efforts to, to put this state-of-the-art facility in progress. I think Ken mentioned that $110 million project, and the City of Omaha is contributing $3 million. I've talked a lot about the importance of, of public-private partnerships and how important they are to move our city forward. We saw it with, with the downtown park. We're seeing it here again with an investment in, it's really an investment in our community, because our kids are in need, and this will help to address that very important need. And if, if we can turn less than 3% of the investment from city funds into a $110 million facility, I'll do that every single day for the citizens of Omaha and for the health of our kids. So I wanna appreciate the vision and collaboration and leadership of the group that's doing this, and Ken, thank you for, for joining us today. And I hope all the, the project continues to go well. I know construction's underway, and I'll very happily support this.
Thank you. Ms. Melton, you're recognized.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Stinson, for taking the time to appear, and I really wanna thank you for taking the time and spending all the effort to raise the money. I know that there's a small amount coming from ARPA, but the vast majority is money that, that you and others have gone out and raised. They're private philanthropic donors, not taxpayers. And it's because we have people like you that are willing to go out, that care about this issue and care about our kids, and by the way, these are the taxpayers of Omaha's kids, that it's, it's gonna help. So when we say, "Why are taxpayers spending us?", well, we're, we're actually investing in our own children with this, and I would say, when you put $3 million in for a $110 million project, that's the best rate of return that we could ever see. In many other cities and other states, the people expect the government to come up with the $110 million, and then maybe we'll raise 3 million in private donors. Here in Omaha, we do it the opposite, and I think we're very fortunate in Omaha to have people such as Mr. Stinson and the other generous donors to Children's Hospital. I can tell you, in my work in, in my other job that I have, working in the. I can tell you, in my work in my other job that I have, working in the juvenile courts, this is also an investment because a lot of the children, if we can get them the intervention and the help that they need, and currently, you're absolutely right, there aren't beds available. In fact, it's not just beds available in Omaha, such as the waiting list for CHI, which actually has had good success. So I would think of this as an expansion of that, so we don't just have the responsibility all on maybe one hospital or one care. It's also going to keep those kids from possibly then entering into the juvenile system as they get older. So having a $3 million investment early on for this intervention stage actually saves the taxpayers' money because it costs a heck of a lot more once a child gets into the juvenile court system, potentially gets incarcerated, and then potentially becomes a repeat offender as an adult. This is a very, very minor investment by the city that benefits the entire city and especially our children. So I guess I completely disagree. What I would like to see, though, I would like to see insurance companies help cover some of the mental health costs. I do find in working with families who are trying to get their children mental health, if they don't qualify for the Medicaid, that they have insurance coverage. Mr. Stinson, I don't know if you have any answer. I know you're helping to build it, and I know they're going to come once you do. Is your group Mental Health Innovation Foundation, will they be helping and maybe covering some of the costs for those that don't maybe qualify for Medicaid? Is there other funding or other groups that will maybe be willing to step in with that?
That's a good question. The direct question is, it's not part of our plan or our funding goal to do that. And I think children's, if there's someone there from children's today, they might be able to answer that better than I could. The positive news is for mental health care, inpatient care for kids is largely reimbursed by Medicaid. And good eligibility for kids, much more so than adults. So that's a positive. I would be lying if I gave you any statistics about the amount that might be involved, Councilman.
Well, maybe that's our next goal, is once we build it, then we go out and maybe try and find some additional foundations that can help with some of that. Because I think that's what will be important, is once it's built and we have the center, is making sure that all kids will be able to have it in the event that we just have so many kids that fall in between, they don't qualify for the Medicaid, yet their parents, you know, they have a $10,000 deductible before they can get any coverage. And so I do find that there's a gap there that I would love to work on. When do we think that this may be completed, the build-out? What is the estimated timeframe?
It'll be complete construction fall of '25, but there's some shakeout time, as you would imagine, for the staff to get in there, so early '26. But I would comment, I totally agree with what you're saying, not just about reimbursement. I'm not very tuned on the dollars on that. But in my view, this is a start of an initiative that goes beyond a building and a place for treatment at the building. We're studying right now the outreach to schools and how effective and how could it be more effective, for example? Trying to nip the issue in the bud, so to speak. We're talking about figuring a way, how could we expand the awareness of primary care doctors, which oftentimes are the first point of contact with parents of kids who have trouble? They're all incredibly competent doctors, perhaps some more development and awareness in terms of the mental health part of it. But I think our objective ultimately is to make Omaha basically a state-of-the-art facility for care and treatment of kids with mental health and not just in this building.
Well, I just want to thank you, and thank you for, you had to focus, you got to have the building first, and I really appreciate all the efforts you've done to accomplish this. And I do look forward, and I do think we have the people in Omaha that care. And so once we have it built and as we're going, I'm confident that we can move forward to address some of those other issues. And I love the fact that you built out to have additional space to cover some of those things you're talking about, to expand out into the community. So I fully support this, and I appreciate the efforts, and I look forward to seeing it get built. So thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Bagley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. I know that the commitment, I was out there at the groundbreaking with Mr. Stinson and that great team of people that, Mr. Stinson gave a great speech that day along with others, and he reiterated that today on the research and the looking into how to best address the crisis for kids of the mental health brought on by COVID and other things in society. And the work that got put into this and listening to those speakers that day, it's powerful that people come together to try to deal with crisis and things that, there's no better resource in the world than our kids. And the struggles that are out there with kids today, you hear a lot of things when we send in these seats on councils or boards on, what are you doing to try to fix this? Well, it's nothing you fix overnight, but listen to the speakers and Mr. Stinson again here today, that the genuine commitment from people in the city government and also the private sector to start addressing this, the groundwork is being done. And that old location on 84th, I think the old Indian Hills was out there when I was a kid, it's transforming on how we turn the tide on addressing mental health crisis with our kids. So thanks, Mr. Stinson, again to everybody on your team. And again, the genuine commitment to try to fix a problem that is not only an Omaha problem, but a national problem. And it's good to be in a compassionate city like Omaha where we have people stepping up and the great caregivers that are going to come together to provide these services. I'm more than happy to offer my support of this and thank everybody again for all the commitment they've made to this today. Thanks, Mr. President.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Stinson, I just wanted to personally thank you for contributing to the overall wellness of our youth, which in turn is our future of tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll just add, today is just public hearing, of course, and tomorrow, or next week, is the vote. I look forward to supporting this as well at that time. I've advocated for many years that I think the city should be more involved in the mental health issue. Ask any provider or parent or police chief or superintendent of schools, and they'll tell you that this is one of the most important things we can be doing. And as Mr. Stinson noted, part of the problem with the current system of support we have is it's very fragmented, and parents don't know where to go, and kids don't know where to go to get the service they need. And this is going to be a way to really address that. I am actually really encouraged with the addition of this project and others like Community Alliance's project, the work the county is doing with the county jail. The next two items we have on our agenda, about mental health coresponders and the coresponder unit within the Omaha Police Department, that we're building a structure here in Omaha that is unique and can help us address these issues in a much better way than we ever have in the past. I know we all also understand that part of this challenge then will be workforce-related, finding the workforce we know we need to staff these facilities and to make services available to those in crisis. But I know we're all working on that as we speak as well. The last thing I think I just mentioned is that the $3 million that is being contributed to the city within this ordinance is not ARPA money, it's general fund money. And that's a little bit unusual, but I think very well worth it as well. And at this point in the year, in making that contribution, we'll still have an $8 million carryover into 2025. So I think it's very doable and very justifiable, and this issue is worth investing in. So, Mr. Stinson, you've had a lot of thank yous today. I want to thank you as well, but also thank your team that is here today, and also Beth Oxer, who I know has spent a couple of years working hard on this project and helping raise the money, too. So thanks for all your efforts. I think you're on.
You're absolutely right. Beth has been a key part of this whole process. I'm glad you made that point.
You bet. Okay, I don't see any further lights. Thank you for joining us, and we'll vote on this next week. Madam Clerk.
One public hearing can be held for items 42 and 43, ordinances to amend sections 23-178 and 23-177 of the Omaha Municipal Code to eliminate the step placement progression for the mental health crisis coresponder classification and to change the salary range of the employment classification entitled Mental Health Crisis Coresponder. Personnel Board recommends approval.
Public hearings on agenda items 42 and 43 are today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon. Deb Sanders, City Human Resources, here to answer any questions.
Chelsea Ship, Human Resources, also here to answer questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Larry, are you an opponent? Come on up.
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, 68132. One of the reasons I do this is to get some discussion because we don't necessarily understand what's on the agenda item. So I'm against another raise after we voted the first time, then you come up and amend it to raise the price on it even further from $47,000 to $55,000, et cetera. It's kind of like bait and switch in a way. And I'm against, you know, here again, I fail to comprehend why we need riding along with the police or joining in on the call that the police get by a mental health crisis Somebody on the telephone can assess a situation and know that they need to send a coresponder out just like that? I think mental health is more difficult to understand than that. So I question the expenditure of this money as being not legitimate, I guess. Thank you.
Thank you. Were there any other opponents on these items? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Bagley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. Deb, quick question for you, please.
Yes, sir.
We had a conversation this morning, I believe, in our HR committee. Can you confirm why the salary base went from 47.7 to 55.1 for us?
Yes, as you will see, the top end did not change. So one of the things that we have looked at, and at the request of the Omaha Police Department and the mental health crisis individuals, we had a bachelor's degree requirement. And it has been, in order to get your licensure, you need to require a master's degree. So individuals were stuck at the D step. So the very first part of the pay scale, if you had a bachelor's degree, then until you got your master's degree, you were frozen at a particular step. You didn't go beyond that. What we've discovered is all of our mental health crisis coresponders, they have their master's degrees, some of them have multiple master's degrees, and that helps with the licensure. As well as, these individuals are going out with our police department, they're responding with our officers. This is someone that is in crisis. It's not like it's a clinical setting where someone can come in, they can make an appointment, they can discuss certain things. This is someone that's reacting in the moment. So therefore, that higher level of education, that higher level is something that is being required. The very first part of the pay scale basically then was just lopped off because that was for the individuals that only possessed bachelor's degrees, who might not have had all of that experience. The individuals that we see that apply for these jobs, that come to us, are those more experienced individuals. And so we started the beginning pay scale, we took the D step, and we moved it to the A step. So there's more progression there.
Thanks for that great explanation as you gave us this morning as well. I think it's important for the public, you always do a great job of explaining in detail the reason for an ordinance that comes up. And as you said, it was a bachelor's degree requirement, and now it's a master's degree. And it's important also for people to understand, I think there's five coresponders, correct?
That's correct.
So these five coresponders, they're not waiting by their phone to set an appointment. They are going out in the field to deal with a crisis with Omaha's finest.
That is correct.
And the training, certainly better education with a master's degree. When I ran for this office, the mental health is a great crisis. Police shortage is part of it. But having trained professionals deal with mental health issues is a tremendous tool for the city, and this is compensating them accordingly. And I think you had said this morning, this was funded by three years of grants before, correct?
Correct. It was all grant-funded until the 2024 budget year, when it's being moved into the city's general fund. So the city is paying for all of that. The other thing that we need to remember as well is when they're going out with police officers, there's a lot that was placed on our police officers. They're not trained specifically in in-depth mental health crisis response. They do have training, it's great training, but that's not the specific in-depth type of training. So that's why they're going out with the police, so that they can handle that situation in the moment, which is a lot different than, you know, if you're on Robertol on a day-to-day basis. This is something that is unique to be called upon to do that in the moment.
I can tell you, when I ran for this seat, the conversation I had on doorsteps with people was that, at the time of the George Floyd national, there was protests and all kinds of things going on civilly in the country. When I had the conversations in neighborhoods or with people, and I talked about this mental health coresponder, it was 100% support from people to deescalate an otherwise situation where it can lead to issues with the police involving discharging of a weapon, maybe somebody losing their life. This is a tool and a resource that helps not only our citizens, but the police, and it gives them subject matter experts to come in and try to help. I know there's been a lot of documented cases of where this has helped, and I've shared personally with the police chief. I will always support this, and I think it's a great tool for the community. So I appreciate your explanation on this today for us, Deb. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Melton, you're recognized.
Thank you. Yeah, I wanted to make it, this is very important. All we're doing is going from a base salary of about $47,000 to making it a base salary of $55,000, but we're increasing it from a requirement of a bachelor's to a master's degree. And essentially, that just means what we're doing is we're increasing, if you break it down by the hour, we're going from $23 an hour to $26 an hour. And it's $26 an hour for a person that has at least one, if not multiple, master's degrees. So I think we're getting a lot of bang for our buck there. So the people that are willing to do this kind of work for this money, by the way, they definitely have their heart as well as their brain involved in the amount of education that they have. So I think it's well worth it, and you're not changing the top. So essentially, the people that are there, if they're not at the bottom level, we're not even spending any additional money. All you're doing is, when you're hiring new people, just for, especially for recruitment purposes, I would think you would need to do that with requiring a master's. So I just want to say, I don't even think this is changing our budget.
It is not.
Correct. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Rowe.
Thank you. I wanted to make that point as well. This is not affecting our budget at all based on the people that we have working in this job now. So I appreciate all the work you're doing. It's just a cleanup thing in my mind. I think I wanted to mention, I mean, Mr. Stinson talked about the welfare center at 84th and Dodge being world-class. And I think this, the coresponder program that we have in Omaha, I'd like to cast the vision that it be first-class, that it be world-class, that cities would look to Omaha and say, wow, you're getting that mental health intervention right. And I think we have the people that are doing it. They're doing it every day, and they're doing a great job. And I think we just need to make it completely clear that it's important to us. I appreciate that.
Thank you. There's no further lights. Next item.
Item 44, an ordinance to approve a service agreement with T2L Utility Partners, NPL Integrated Services LLC for GIS, PACP, and Engineering Technical Services for sewer Maintenance.
Public hearing on number 44 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 45, an ordinance to approve a non-exclusive public road license agreement with Metro FiberNet LLC for a period of 10 years.
Public hearing on number 45 is today. Proponents, please. Public hearing on number forty-five is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon. My name's Craig Zimmerman. I'm with Government Affairs from Metronet, opus in Des Moines, Iowa, one two two one Kiosaku Way. So just opening comment maybe, I'm not sure if you all are real familiar with our organization, but we're the, the largest independently owned, hundred percent fiber optic company. We're headquartered in Evansville, Indiana, currently in sixteen states, hoping with the, the approval of the right-of-way agreement in your subsequent council session, we will make it into our seventeenth state, as Omaha would be the first in Nebraska. We're really excited about the opportunity to bring fiber to the premise, both to residential and to businesses throughout the state. Currently, I wanted to mention specifically that we are a hundred percent funded by Metronet only. There's no funding required by the city, by the state, by the federal, any taxpayers whatsoever. So here to certainly answer any questions that you might have.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed. Mr. Bagley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. Craig, thanks for being here today. Welcome to Omaha.
You're welcome. Thank you.
In reading this, some questions I got, and we've dealt with Google Fiber and others, so I just, if you can answer a few questions for me today.
Sure.
Is this overhead or underground or both, I'm assuming, correct?
Both, yes. There'll be, there'll be certain areas that have to be aerial, whether it be over busy streets, et cetera, but, but both, but predominantly underground.
Okay.
Yep.
So I, I know in dealing with Google, they started here in the last year.
Yeah.
A lot of it was in my district, and we love the competition. It's great, and we welcome you to that, to that contest as well for competition and provide great service. When you're putting in your fiber, when you're putting this in, what kind of notifications do you, if they're going to be on Pacific Street where I live, and I can give an example, Google, in conversations I've had with them, they have, they'll put a sign at the end of the block, and they'll say, hey, we're going to be working in this neighborhood. They'll canvas the doors. So when Danny Bagley living on that street wakes up one day and there's a, a bore machine in his front yard, I will have a contact information, somebody at Google, what they do, they have a contact phone number. So they're not calling their council member. We're glad to help. But it really is incumbent upon you guys
Absolutely.
to say, here's who you can call. So tell me how that process will work with you guys.
Sure. And it's similar to how Google Fiber does it, but we have a, a first notification that's actually mailed to each resident. We actually do the construction in, in a neighborhood area, typically in the neighborhood of two-hundred-and-fifty to three-hundred, excuse me, two-hundred-and-fifty to five-hundred homes. When that is going to begin, our first notification is a letter. That letter goes out thirty to forty-five days prior to any construction. So before any boring machines or whatever come out, there'll be that letter. The second notification is a postcard that's mailed, again, to that resident in that neighboring air, neighborhood area, seven to ten days prior. So they'll have two notifications. The problem with mailers, as you all know, is that somebody takes a look at it and says, oh, Metronet, they're trying to sell me something. I'll throw it out. So we purposely make them look construction-like instead of marketing-like. So there's those two notifications. Then a third notification occurs three to five days prior to the machinery going into the area. And that's a, a yard dart, or could be a Post-it note that goes on the garage or on a front door. So one of, one of those multiple ways, that yard dart goes in the easement of, of homes. It's a, so that's placed there three to five days prior. And then the fourth notification is similar to Google Fiber is, we put signs at the entrance and the exits of those neighborhoods. And on all of those pieces of information, there's contact information, eight-hundred numbers, website addresses. And then the other thing I wanted to mention is we work very, very closely with the cities to provide them with as much information as possible. We know that, that you all get calls. And so we work closely with the, the city's communication group. We provide links to, for example, construction educational videos suggesting what is an easement. Most residents know that there's an easement on their property. It's not owned by them, but they maintain it. And we'll be doing construction in that easement. So information about what to expect, the outline of the phases, the restoration process, we provide all that information, frequently ask questions to the city just in case they do get calls. We do also have a ticketing system that through that construction notification process and through that toll-free number and the website addresses, we open up tickets. So let's say a resident calls, I have some concern about construction going on in, in my yard or near my yard. I've got sprinkler system. I've got electronic dog fences. I'm concerned about, you know, your construction may be impacting those. And so anyway, we, we take note of any and all of those notification issues, any of those tickets that are opened. We have a process to respond to each and every one of those tickets within twenty-four hours or a business day. And then our goal is to complete or, or resolve any of those issues within a seven-day period. So our outside plant construction team will have daily interaction, weekly interaction, monthly interaction with your city staff to go through all of those tickets, suggest here's how many were in this category, here's how many we resolved within, responded to within a day and resolved within seven days. So we, we construct, we, we go through that very intently to make sure that there's great communications between the, the city and, and our company during that construction process. I hope, Mr. Bagley, that I answered your question correctly.
You did. I was crossing off some other things I was going to ask you
Okay.
you were well-prepared. And I think you said this is the sixteenth state you're coming to.
This would be the seventeenth state.
Seventeen, okay.
Yep.
So we're not reinventing the wheel
No.
on what you guys do.
No.
And I'm assuming you guys have gotten better at that. And as outlined that you gave today, Craig, that, that's what I wanted to hear.
Good.
That's proactive, and complaints are going to come in.
Oh, yes.
That's just the nature of the beast. But I, I can tell you from my full-time job at the Omaha Public Power District as a claims representative, when OPBD crews out or tearing stuff up, I understand those calls because I get them.
Yeah.
If there's, if there's communication done, that's, it's not going to stop all the problems, like I said, but it's going to, it's going to put people at ease that, okay, now I see this going on. I've been notified.
Yep.
I see that the yard darts, those are new terms that I learned in the last couple of years. Those are great tools. And if something happens, I got Joe Smith that I can call at this number, and they'll already have documentation of what's going on.
Absolutely.
Do you guys know when and where you're going to start in Omaha?
Yes. The intent is to, once approved for the right-of-way license agreement, the intent would be to start in twenty-twenty-four, the beginning of the construction period in twenty-twenty-four. We know winters in the Midwest are, are kind of obtrusive to burying fiber. So we'd likely wait until the winter is done. And then once the, the ground is less frozen, we would, we'd begin construction in, in, in twenty-twenty-four. As far as completion, that, that hasn't been settled. And I, I, in, in talking about how the, the construction will occur, we do have fully-designed and engineered plans for phase one of our development here in Omaha. I don't have that with me. I would be glad to provide that information back and, and make sure that you all have an access to it prior to doing your final vote on the, on the right-of-way agreement. But predominantly, there's, there's going to be two main areas within the city going north to south. And I just don't know the specifics on where exactly they're going to start and put in the, like, the fiber ring to, to do that. We do release as we go, and we do restore as we go. Couple of major points there. When we go through and develop and, and construct that neighborhood area that I was talking about, two-hundred-and-fifty to five-hundred homes, as soon as that's completed, then we'll turn that on and allow those, those residents and those businesses in that area to get access to the service. We won't wait until all of, of Omaha is built before that, that occurs. So that's the, the release as we go. The restore as we go, I want to make sure too, to, to make reference, is that those construction, like, like you mentioned, council member, they're, it's obtrusive. I mean, there's going to be big equipment that comes through and, and buries this fiber. It's a lot of construction. And, and, you know, you're already seeing it a little bit with, with probably Google Fiber and Ubiquity, and there'll be a lot of questions and concerns about it. But it's our process to restore as we go. So for example, once the machinery has, has gone through that neighborhood area, twenty-four to forty-eight hours, we're doing the restoration of that area. So typically, no longer than two days is there any restoration issues that, that they should be concerned with.
That, that's good news as well. Would you mind, so you're saying you're going to start in twenty-twenty-four?
Correct.
Can you leave your card with our staff?
Absolutely.
Because it would be great if you could email over, you said going north to south, what parts of Omaha you're going to be in, because certainly the seven of us want to know that. And we can also, I suggest you reach out to the neighborhood associations. That's certainly something that I'll be doing. So they have that information. Maybe it's overkill from the multiple things you're doing up into the, the yard darts and the signs. But also, the neighborhood associations have social media.
Sure.
Those are great tools to get out there. And again, it's proactive
Yes.
instead of on the other end, because I've been on the end of those calls in this seat. And it's hard to play catch-up on those things.
It is.
And, and people are just PO'd about it. But this way, again, we can't stop that, but the, the information that you share with this council that we can get out to our constituents, I think that's the best thing that I'm hearing you say today.
Good.
You guys are ready to do that. And I'll look forward to, again, your competition in this city for the services you provide, and hopefully you hire a lot of local workers to do that.
Absolutely, yeah.
Do you know how many people you're going to need for this?
No, I don't offhand, but I will tell you, we're, we have every intention of opening up a storefront, so we haven't totally abandoned brick and mortar. So we'll have a storefront open, open in Omaha as well to support any, any folks that want to actually speak to somebody in person, customer service issues, billing questions, getting service, removing service. So that'll be another portion, but we'll have outside plant, folks that, that'll be employees and, and part of, part of residents of the state, city. We'll have field engineers. We'll have residential construction folks, commercial construction folks, customer service folks, community development folks, community engagement folks. So there'll, there'll be a, a fair number. I'm real familiar with what we're doing in Des Moines, Iowa, as being a resident there. And currently, we're at over fifty, fifty folks that live in the Des Moines area, not including me. So around that number to start.
Okay.
Yep.
Well, I, that's all the questions I got, and my colleagues went away. But I appreciate you providing these answers. And again, if we can get those emailed over to us
Yes.
when you're going to start, where you're going to be, and also the contact person for each of these projects, that's great information, not only for us, but we can get out to our constituents as well.
Absolutely. I did want to mention, you brought up homeowners associations. So as a part of the city build process, they do not actually go into private streets and private homeowners associations. They have different rules and regulations than the city does as far as owning the streets, maintaining the streets, easements, et cetera. So we have a community development team that works with those, and I just pulled down that list of, you guys are phenomenal on your, on your city's website about listing all those and including contact information. But we'll work with them to put together what's called a Utilities Access Agreement. If they're, if they're desiring Metronet and, and fiber to the home in their private neighborhoods, we'll get a Utilities Access Agreement signed with those HOAs and a plan to do that development in their private areas. So that'll be over and above what's being done in, in what we call city build process. Yep. You're welcome.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Craig, you mentioned that you had, you didn't bring with you your rollout schedule as it relates to how you're going to go about putting this into the Omaha area.
Correct.
It's very important that we have that information
Yes.
before we vote next week. Also, how did you determine where you would start and where you would finish?
I don't actually participate in that, so I'm, I can't tell you the exact criteria. It's, a lot has to do with where we have access to the long-line fiber and where we're going to actually put together the hub and the cabinets, and then the ring associated to the hub and the cabinets, and then the build-out from there. So that, that's predominantly how it, how it gets started, started from a design and engineering standpoint. And I will, will, will definitely make sure that you have a copy of our, our phase-one design and engineered areas before you vote on, on this.
Right. I'd like to know, you said you didn't know the answer to my question, so I would like to get more specific
Okay.
about how that decision came about, whether that was information gathering that you received from the city to help you with that process. I'd like to know all of that.
Sure. I will anecdotally add one piece of that. We have some familiarity with where Google Fiber and Ubiquity are planning to build. And kind of selfishly and kind of in not-so-selfishly, looking at the city of Omaha, the sooner that we, including our competition, can put fiber in and allow those services to your residents and to the businesses, the better. So if we, we've looked at those areas that they may not be address, addressing initially and going there. So hopefully, what that is, is a benefit to your residents and businesses. But a little bit selfish as well, the sooner we get market share, the better off. I mean, we're a for-profit company. Again, we're not asking for any funding from, from anybody. We're doing this on our, our nickel and hope to get some of those nickels back as well. So that, that's one component of, of, of your answer. I'll get more as, as I can.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that.
You bet.
Thank you. Ms. Milton.
Yeah, I have just one quick request.
Sure.
So you said you mailed out the notices to the neighborhoods.
Mm-hmm.
I was just wondering if you could, I don't want you to have to, I don't want your committee to have to go through any extra. Could you just always have Omaha City Council on there as one of the people it goes out to when it comes? You could even put, can I volunteer our chief of staff, Mr. Doubting? If you could put his name as somebody the letter always goes out to, then he'll make sure it, whoever's district it's in, it gets
I see.
put in our mailbox.
Yep.
So then, that, just the thirty-day letter, like, we don't need to be on all five notices.
Okay.
Just the first one, because I think it would be helpful if I see it in my, you know, in my inbox, I see, oh, look, it's going to be starting in Hillsborough.
Right.
Well, and then if I get a contact about a month later, I'm going to be aware, somebody is doing fiber in our neighborhood
Makes sense.
or they're doing this, and I'm going to go, well,
Makes sense.
I, I know exactly who it is.
Yeah.
Sometimes people say that, well, first, we're trying to hunt down who is it? You know, which, which party is doing, because now we have a number of different ones.
Yeah.
I think it would just be nice to know.
It'd be helpful.
So then you just, that very first one that it goes out to, if it could always just be our, our chief of staff, and then, and then our, our staff will make sure it gets to the right inbox
Sure.
for the seven of us.
Yep. So the other thing that we, we currently do with, with the majority of our cities, i- is there somebody typically on the communication staff that we make aware of when, when those, those notifications are going to occur and where they're going to occur, what neighborhood area, what LCPs? But that, similar to that, certainly not a problem to, to make sure that your chief of staff has that, so you know which area of the city that, that's, that's occurring. Yep.
No, I, that would be great. I know, in fact, on our staff, I think Steve Scarpello is the one that handles most of our, a lot of, a lot of those. I don't know, it might be Margaret Gibson, depending on planning, Public Works. It's kind of like, which one should that go to? But I think that would be helpful, and then you don't have to worry about searching to see which council member it's in.
Sure.
You just have the one contact that stays on the list.
No, that's great.
If you could ask Metronet to do that, I, I think it'd be great. And by the way, competition is always good for all the residents, and it'll bring those costs down. I think when I look on Nextdoor, one of the most common requests is, I, I want to drop my current company.
Provider.
Who do you recommend, right?
Yeah.
And we don't have very many, they don't feel that they have very many choices. So I always think the more choices, the better it is for everyone.
Absolutely. Yeah, you know, I, I use analogy that I think JFK talked about, the rising tide and the boats will, will rise along with that tide. And, and I think what we've seen as a And, and I think what we've seen as a fiber to the premise provider of, similar to a Google Fiber, is the, the benefit of fiber is, is so much better than current telecommunications, whether that be cable or coax, your typical providers that, and what we're seeing is, you know, as we, as we come in and they attempt to compete with this, their levels of support, their levels of engineering, their technology, you know, they're trying to, they're, they're trying to stay up with, with the latest and greatest as well. So all boats will rise, competition is good, residents and businesses will be great. You know, it's amazing, Omaha is going to be fiber-rich between what Ubiqui, Ubiquity will do in allowing third parties to come in and, and provide access through what they're building, with what Google Fiber is doing, what we're doing, you're going to be one of the most fiber-rich communities in, in the country. So, you know, that's awesome. It's exciting stuff.
Well, thank you. And thank, thank you for driving over and being here today in person.
My pleasure.
And I really appreciate it. It actually, it also shows how much you and your company care to actually make sure that you're here to have this discussion.
Yep. We'll have, we'll have a government affairs individual at, on monthly meetings with your city staff. Your city staff typically includes Public Works and Engineering. You know, permitting will go on throughout the whole process. I mean, so there'll be, there'll be Metronet folks involved with the city on a weekly, if not daily basis.
Well, thank you. Nothing further, Mr. President, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. No further lights, next item.
Item 46, an ordinance levying a special tax assessment for condemned buildings or structures for group number 2023 dash zero one.
Public carion number 46 is today, proponents please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public carions closed.
Item 47, an ordinance to approve the Southside Terrace Phase One Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Agreement.
Public carion number 47 is today, proponents please.
Oh yeah, Don Seaton, City Planning. I'm here for any questions you may have.
Thank you.
Hello, Bill Lucash, Brinshaw Development. I just have a few comments that I'd like to make about Southside Terrace Phase One. First of all, this is, as a reminder, this is 92 units of mixed-income housing, 24 market rate units and 68 affordable units. 39 of those 68 affordable units are replacement units for people that live in Southside Terrace. Construction will begin shortly after closing, which should be in February of 2024. And along, just as another note, along with the city, we have recently held two contractor outreach events to encourage SEBs, MBEs, WBEs and Section Three businesses. And at those two meetings that were held over two nights in both English and Spanish, we had 40 and 47 participants at those meetings, learning more about the bidding process for this. So very excited to be doing this project, very honored to be part of the Choice Neighborhood effort, and thank you so much.
Thank you. Other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public carions closed, next item.
Item 48, an ordinance to approve the 30th and Fowler Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Agreement.
Public carion number 48 is today, proponents please.
Oh yeah, Don Seaton, City Planning. And again, I'm here for any questions you may have on this TIF agreement.
Thank you. Other proponents?
Bob Griffith, 1140 West Center Road, here on behalf of the applicant. If you recall, this plan was approved and presented before you at your December 5th meeting, this agreement just implements that plan. So here for any questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents on number 48? Seeing none, any opponents?
Anthony Cato, 2596 Crown Point Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska. I'm a little concerned about the development of, of this location. There are many places in North Omaha that have poor housing or poor-conditioned housing that are not demolished. We have a lot of empty lots in that community. And I don't see the need for a storied commercial building of that size without a specific plan to the community that knows exactly what's going to be in it or what's going to be proposed. It just says, "commercial building." And for me, that's a problem. Because if we have all this empty space and we're telling the city, or the city's being told that there's not enough public housing or affordable housing being built there, and you're saying that it's in poor condition, wouldn't it be better to just revitalize that, those three houses? I mean, I mean, if you, if you're saying in one area that you have poor housing and you don't have affordable housing, and I can go through my neighborhood between Miller Park and Ames, and I can find at least 50 empty spots or 50 homes that are not in poor, in poor condition, that are not being utilized, that helps solve our problem with affordable housing. We don't need a commercial building unless you're going to tell me that there's going to be jobs for those people to be able to get to afford a home and have something valuable back to that community. That seems a problem to me. It's problematic. And if you're not going to utilize our areas of investment wisely, why tear down something? Just make it better. Not by putting up a big brick and mill of boat, building and nobody knows it's going to go in there. Furthermore, I would also say maybe we ought to be able to have the community input to recruit better businesses to come to that side of the community. So more opportunities are given for people of low economic status. It does not make sense to me to have a no commercial building because we've got plenty of them around it that we can rebuild. I can go to the General Mills Building, I can go to the empty lot over off of Taylor across the street, I can go to the corner of Sprague where they're putting up something there, they're selling that lot. I can go to the lot right next to the Spalding Bar, Johnny T's. It's an empty lot, it's been there for almost 20 years. I've lived in this community for 20 years and it's an empty lot. And it, it covers from Ruggles to Sprague or beyond. It's ridiculous. We have too many empty spaces that need to be filled with either quality homes, quality businesses to add quality jobs to that community, period. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents today? Seeing none, public carions closed, Ms. Milton, you're recognized.
Oh, thank you. Could you come back up? Is this, if I recall, I mean, we do a lot of projects, but I thought this was a bank.
That is correct. So.
Okay.
Appreciate the concern. I'm glad some of these points were raised.
Yeah.
If you recall, that six lots, three of which are vacant currently, three of which have severely dilapidated homes which will be removed. It will be a retail branch bank, this includes about 10 high-quality permanent jobs. That directly will hopefully impact the, the surrounding community. It is a large national retailer, so for banking services, so it is a solid tenant. My, my client, the developer, will retain ownership of that land and, and as, and the building and act as the landlord. So it won't be something that they hand off after the development is done. We did have reached out to other neighbor communities, but certainly we want to invest in the community and be a good neighbor. And so while we know there are other vacant lots in the area, we, this is the lot and the land that the, my client owns, and so that is what they have control of. And, and so I think they're addressing both empty lots as well as currently underutilized buildings, so.
Right.
Hopefully that answers your question.
No, yeah, so your client owns the land, this isn't the city building anything, we don't, all, all we're doing is approving the TIF. But I think it was a good point.
Absolutely.
That, you know, what is going in there? And I, I think that that is really important. And I think having a bank go in there, which is something that the community always, we always need, you know, a local bank and that has good jobs.
Correct.
Higher-paying jobs.
Absolutely.
With benefits. And I think that that's really important, it's an important service to have in, in the community. So that, I just wanted to clarify that because it isn't as, it, it wasn't as clear on, on the agenda. We just had the benefit of having the whole presentation a couple of weeks ago that we didn't redo today. So I just thought it was important to kind of cover that again.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Nothing.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you. Mr. Cato, did you have some additional questions?
Anthony Cato, 2596 Crown Point Avenue. To Ms. Milton's point about a bank and being utilized jobs, I'm not disputing that. But in that community, we have, we had a bank there at 30th and Ames. It was Bank of the West, formerly Commercial Federal, no longer there. But it's being, it's utilized in another app capacity, but it's not, not, not a big thing. We also have just a, just a block and a half north of that, you have American National Bank. I don't see the need for a bank per se, because even if you want to say a bank is a, a, a land-based job that's very important to the community, you still don't have a major grocery store. You still don't have a major business that can employ more than just, on average, for a national bank for that size, maybe 20 people. I would like to see something there that's got to employ at least 50 to 100 people. Why not move the bank just a couple of blocks south of that, right next to the empty lot that used to have a business that hired 200 people? They had a small grocery store, they had the chicken mart there, they had, right next door to it, they built a Family Dollar that's blighted. I can go down a few blocks further where they had the Coca-Cola plant. When my parents first came here, and even though we were a military family, you had a Coca-Cola plant, you had the Best Soda plant, you had the Omaha Box Company, just a few blocks north or south of that. And it hired more than just 20 people. Do something commercially viable for the neighborhood that will hire enough people so they can have long-term affordable housing and, and get back to that community. That's what I would, I would say. Thank you.
Thank you. And if you could step up, if you want to address those concerns there?
Certainly. And obviously, our goal is to have as successful of a development as possible. We're certainly constrained by the land that is under contract and what we can do there to make work financially. And as far as my client is concerned, this is the, the best foot forward to make a successful project. A use that allows for 200 jobs is not something that my client can find viable for that particular piece of ground. You know, maybe in the future, they can continue to develop in an area and then maybe that is a possibility. But as it stands now, it's six empty lots with no jobs. So in the sense that some progress is better than none, I think this is a good project. It's a small infill project, it's the kind of project that TIF is best utilized for. And so we feel it's a good use of the, of the area.
And then he mentioned, did you look at the other locations south of there?
I apologize, I'm not intimately familiar with all the locations around it. I can speak to this particular ground, but beyond that, I'm just not able to speak.
City Planning, can you speak to that question?
Dave Fansel, City Planning, can you repeat your question?
Mr. Cato asked me a question, why we didn't look at other location, other like empty lots further south of that. Excuse me, Ms. Milton, did you have something that you needed to share with us?
Oh, no, I, I just think that he said they didn't own the, they don't own the land south of there.
Okay. So I was speaking with Mr. Fansel about the location south of there. Mr. Cato had mentioned that there was some open land south of the location that's being proposed. And that's what, that's what's before us right now.
Sure.
Have we taken a look at the, the other open locations and what the feasibility of building there is?
So, yeah, Dave Fansel, City Planning. We don't typically advise, when people come to us with a development proposal, we don't typically advise them to go look elsewhere. So we're more reactive when somebody comes to us with an application and a concept plan. So when, in this case, when we were approached to give our opinion on this site, we look at the things we need to look at. Is it master plan compliant? Is rezoning necessary? Is plating necessary? We don't do property searches for private companies when they are looking at a certain area.
So is it correct, correct to say that when someone brings you a proposal, you just focus in on the location in which they're inquiring about? You don't look for other opportunities nearby that might perhaps fit better for that community?
Yeah, we respond to the proposal that is brought to us.
Thank you. Thank you.
All set? All right, thank you. Mr. Harding, you're recognized.
I'm confused. When, when did the city of Omaha get into the development business? We're, we're supposed to, I'm sorry, it's, it's a market decision that the, the developer makes. They do a lot of research, they know their market, they know what their, their needs are, and they, it's not our position to, once they come in with a plan, if it's, as was just said, if it's master plan compliant and it fits the, the criteria needed for that developer for that site, it's, it's not the city's position to start telling them to look at other sites. Let's let the market make the decisions.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Yes, Mr. President. Respectfully, Mr. Harding, I understand what the city planning department's role is. However, we are looking at an area that is blighted, that this body agreed and, and put a stamp on and said that the area was blighted. With that being said, and federal funds being received, those questions that Mr. Cato presented to us to inquire about other location only seems right. Whether the city planning department is involved or engaged in the development or not, that's the way the land is. We don't operate, the city does not operate where we do a one-size-fit-all model. If so, we would not be getting city, we would not receive federal grants, and we would not be having community development laws being implied or enacted in certain areas of this city. So we don't operate with a one-size-fit-all model.
Mr. Harding.
A confusion. Robert, could you come up, please? I just, are there any federal funds involved with this?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Johnson.
Mr. President, nor did I say that there wasn't. I simply said that this location is in a blighted area. Please, don't try to put a perception that I'm not knowledgeable about what I'm talking about, because that is not the case. Don't put words in my mouth. I understand that you don't walk the same walk I walk, but that does not give you the right to question what I question. It does not. And actually, it's about being disrespectful. And I am, at the end of this situation here, sitting on this city council where you continue to mark, to mock my questions and evaluate my questions. That's not your role as a city council member to mock or examine my questions that I asked, especially when I was voted by the, by the voters in my community to represent them. And that's what I'm doing. So please respect that fact.
Thank you. No further lights, next item.
Item 49, an ordinance to approve the Kennedy Square West Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Agreement.
Public carion number 49 is today, proponents please.
Oh yeah, good afternoon, Don Seaton, Omaha City Planning Department, and I'm here for any questions you may have on this agreement.
Thank you. Other proponents?
Hello, Bill Lucash with Brinshaw Development, also a proponent for this. I just have some updates on this one as well. As a reminder, this is a 39-unit residential building, a mixed-use building, mixed income with five commercial spaces. 12 of the units are market rate units and then 27 affordable units. 16 of those 27 affordable units will be replacement units for former residents of Spencer Homes. We are hoping to close on this in March and begin construction shortly thereafter. Right now, we are looking at some plans for security at the site and the parking lot across the street, talking to the neighbors. That's something that was very high on their list of things to, to consider, cameras, lighting, privacy fence, that kind of thing. So we're looking at that. I will be engaging some of the neighbors about that very soon, once we have something to, to provide to them. Also, I just wanted to point out that we have a contractor outreach meeting next Tuesday at the venue. This is the second of two meetings. This is the one where people that would like to bid on the work that will be on the, uh, work that will be, uh, take place during construction, they can find out more from the general contractor about how to submit a bid. Uh, that's, uh, 5 o'clock at the venue next Tuesday. So, thank you very much. Here to answer any other questions you might have.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents?
Anthony Kato, 2596 Crown Point, now Omaha, Nebraska. I'm opposed to this because of two reasons. Um, I'm going to give you a little bit of history. And Mr. Harding, you said something that was very important. When did the city get in the business of being, uh, reactive or proactive about building or zoning? Well, maybe I, maybe, maybe I heard you incorrectly, but that's what you kind of indicated. And you're in the business of it because you represent the citizens of this city. And we have a right to know what and what is being put in our neighborhoods. You guys talk about that every single month. I watch you on television every week, and there's always an indication about some kind of problem with what's being put in a neighborhood or somewhere in the community. But the one thing I've never heard you actually do is recruit places and businesses for communities. I've never heard that, that you actively went out and recruited, except for one time, when the city and the state wanted BMW to come to Nebraska. You don't take that approach when you, when you're putting in a business in a business, uh, but, uh, somewhere in the city? Of course you do. That's why you have city planning. That's their job. It's their job to recruit businesses and organizations to be in the community. That's the business that the city council signs off on, sir. That's a direct quote. You, if you're not, then you need to get off the board. Cause that's not what your job is if you're not actively recruiting something positive for the city and community that you represent and your district. I know Mr. Festerson does it on a regular basis. He's done it for Dundee entire time, and Benson, and it's thriving. So don't come in here and talk about, oh, when did we get in the business of doing that? Because if that's the case, that bank that they want to put in that community, like I said, we had to. But they got an empty lot at 30th and Ames. Big empty lot. Been that way for almost 10 years. 10. You want to go a little bit further? How about we go down, right, straight down 30th Street where they're talking about this new building? They want to put more homes in. I'm not opposed to new homes, but that's not what the building was built for. It was built as a community center, just like the old OIC building that was used federal funds to help build, taxpayer money. It's demolished to the ground. It's the, if that lady was alive today, she'd be rolling around in her grave, for real. Because that building was built to house not for commercial property or for residential property. It was there to provide opportunities for jobs. Long-term jobs, education, services to get back to the community, not just North Omaha, citywide. So now you're going to tell me you want to use the Martin Luther King Center that was really designated as a community center to build more homes? But you've got a project less than half a block away. The Spencer Projects, you've got more homes going up there, and you may not be able to fill all them, or the people who get them can't afford to live there. So yes, you're in the business of that, sir. I'm talking to you directly because I felt that it was an insult to you even say something like that. This is a community that needs jobs, affordable housing, mental health care, care for our kids, and, and, and frankly, you're doing a good job, but we could do better. We could have took the old St. Joe Hospital off of 30th and California. It should have been the VA hospital. It had perfect access to get in and out of that building, no problem. Then you know what you could have done? You could have either took that old VA hospital with federal funds, taxpayer money, partnerships, community, and made it into a mental health center. Lasting Hope, which was part of the old Bergen Mercy, right off of 24th and, what, Harney? It's an old hospital, half of it's been demolished. That could have been a mental health center. You need to do more for, not only for the kids, but every time I see one of them homeless people out on the corner, they have mental health issues. They have PTSD. They need housing. They need care. You talk about models. I'm going to give you a good model. Start recruiting mental health professionals to come work right here like you do for the University of Nebraska Medical Center. Outstanding place, building a big, big quiet off, right off of Leavenworth. Great job. Research. But one thing I know, if you have people that you recruit to work in mental health, healthcare, housing, you don't have to worry about a new, another bank. You don't have to worry about another commercial building in the neighborhood because you'll have those things and revenue coming to the community, and it's providing a better service. There are too many empty spots. I've seen me out in Mr. Mel, Ms. Milton's neighborhood. I've been out in Mr. Festerson's neighborhood. Mr. Bagley, he's got a couple of empty lots in your area too as well. We all do. We know that. And you're always looking for the next great thing to help promote that district, including yours, Mr. Harding, including yours. So if you really want to get down to the brass tacks, it is your job as the city council, city planning, and the community wants to hold you accountable for just that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents today? Are you an opponent? Yep.
Larry Store, 501-5 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. Unopposed because I couldn't hear half of what Mr. Harding said. He never sets up to his microphone. It's never out his mouth. Or your equipment is faulty and you don't spend the money on it. I don't know how many times I have to say it. And one other thing now, this gentleman had a lot of interesting things to say. And you didn't call him out of order or off-topic. Why not, Mr. Festerson?
He was on topic. If you stay on topic, you can speak.
You let him speak, but you refused me. Why do you do that?
Are you on topic right now, Larry?
You treat some people differently than others.
Are you on topic right now?
Now, I have to take sides with Ms. Johnson and this gentleman here. I think they had some very good points. And I sit over there and I watch you people and your eyes and your facial expressions when Ms. Johnson is talking. And I don't like it any more than when you treat me the way you do.
This is your time to speak to this agenda item.
You seem to treat people the way you please, and so does he. And you people need to stop that. Stop it or skip down. You're not following your oath of office.
Any other opponents on number 49? Seeing none, the public hearing's closed. Adam Clark.
Item 50, an ordinance to approve the Curtis Corner Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Agreement.
Public hearing on number 50 is today. Proponents, please.
Yes. Good afternoon. Don Seaton, Omaha City Planning Department. I'm here for any questions you may have on this TIF agreement. I would note that this is a single-family infill project. Um, it's on a area of North Omaha that is appropriate for single-family homes and doesn't have the constraints you would find on North 30th Street for single-family homes. So this works out fairly well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents on number 50?
Thank you. Bob Griffith, 11440 Western Road, here on behalf of the applicant, the mensch group of your call. Uh, Phil McLean is the developer of this project. He was before you, along with the rest of the team on November 7th for the plan, which was presented and approved at that point. Um, this is nine single-family detached homes that are true affordable housing homes. We feel it directly addresses a need in the community and is a good use of a vacant piece of ground. So happy to answer any other questions you have.
Thank you. Other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents to number 50? Seeing none, public hearings closed?
Item 51, an ordinance to accept the bid of Garrett's Lawn Service in the total amount of $57,750 for grounds maintenance for the Regency area.
Public hearing on number 51 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed?
Item 52, an ordinance to approve the issuance of special tax revenue redevelopment bonds, Series 50, in the amount of $50 million.
Public hearing on number 52 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed. Mr. Curtis, just because this is a big number, uh, $50 million, would you mind providing just a brief explanation of this for those that are watching?
Steve Curtis, City Finance. This is a number of items that will more than likely total, we're guessing more like 42 million. And in that number, there are, there's a parking garage down on the riverfront that is in a redevelopment area. Uh, some of the expenses associated with the new library at 1401 Jones is in this. Uh, 10 million is going for the central library out at 72nd and Dodge, which is another example of some serious leveraging of a public-private partnership, uh, since we're putting in ultimately 20 million and it'll be worth about 150 million when it's finished. Uh, those are probably the big ones. There are some in there for Crossroads. Uh, the demolition for W. Dale Clark was in there. A little bit to Steel House, uh, to the tune of about a million or so. And some additional land acquisition in North, uh, the, the Builders District to work on garages.
So all previously approved projects, either in budgets or ordinances, and these are the redevelopment bonds to fund them, but does not have any impact on our levy, correct?
That is correct.
All right. Thank you. Next item.
Item 53, an ordinance to approve and accept a grant award agreement from the Nebraska Commission on Law Enforcement and Criminal Justice in the amount of $49,975 for the Omaha Police Department.
Public hearing on number 53 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed?
Item 54, an ordinance to amend Chapter 40, Article 5, Divisions 2 and 3 of the Omaha Municipal Code by amending code provisions pertaining to the issuance of, of certificates for hoisting and portable engineers. Is amendment of the whole request by the Human Resources Department.
Public hearing on number 54 is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon. Bree Robbins, Labor Relations Director. I'm here to answer any questions about the amendment, uh, that was requested by the Human Resources Department, if you have any.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed. Next item.
Item 55, an ordinance to amend Chapter 40, Article 2, Division 2 of the Omaha Municipal Code to modify the licensing requirements for master and journeyman air conditioning and air distribution contractors.
Public hearing on number 55 is today. Proponents, please.
Anna Despoyazny with the Planning Department. I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed. Anna, maybe just take one question for you on this. I know this is, these are, um, issues you work hard on to work through the process and work through our various advising committees, both union, union and non-union members. And in this case, that was done, and you have, feel like you have strong support for this revision, right?
Yes. Um, we actually worked with the, the board itself, which is comprised of union and non-union members on the board. Um, we've got two journeyman members, two master members, and, uh, those are equally distributed between union and non-union. And then we also have a, um, an engineer on the board. And, uh, the changes were made, many of them at the request of the board. We, um, advertised a couple of public hearings, one of which was at the ACAD Board and one of which was at the, uh, Building Board of Review. Neither of those public hearings, um, garnered any interest. We, we had nobody show up in support or in, uh, opposition to the changes that we're proposing today.
Okay. Which generally just are around license renewals and fees and associated penalties?
Yes. Um, the biggest change was basically updating the, the exam that's going to be utilized for the licenses because the exam agency that we used prior no longer supported the city of Omaha, so we had to find another testing agency for that exam.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Uh, Ms. Milton, you're recognized.
I have a question because we had met, it was almost a year ago. We had met on a different licensing.
Correct.
Is this included in that with, it was the refrigeration portion?
This is, this is a different board.
This is just?
This is just the air, the HVAC, basically.
And is it, do you use the same exam company?
Uh, no.
Okay, so, but you, you are in the, because I think that's important. So you use different exam companies for different licensing boards and tests?
Yes, different licenses have different boards. And it's at the discretion of the board which agency that they're going to use for an exam, or if it's the board itself that writes the exam. Um, this particular board, they do utilize a third-party testing agency. So we have no part in writing the exam or monitoring the exam. We just rely on the results that come back from the third-party agency.
Okay. I just wanted to understand the difference between one that I discussed with you a while ago and this one.
I'm trying all, to understand all the boards too, so.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. No further lights. Next item.
Item 56, an ordinance to approve a parking lease and license agreement with Nodle BD1 LLC for the lease of property in adjacent right-of-way.
Public hearing on number 56 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed?
Item 57, an ordinance to amend Section 2-21 of the Omaha Municipal Code pertaining to the salary of city council members.
Public hearing on number 57 is today. Proponents, please.
I thought you might have a presentation. Louis C. Manis, 2709 Dewa Avenue. I support, uh, the pay raises, uh, that you're proposing, um, at 3%. I think that's a good number. Good news, everybody. Inflation is at 3.1, wrapping up the year. So where anytime somebody gets a 3% pay increase annually, it pretty much covers inflation. Uh, and so I have this, uh, chart here. So you can see on 2024, you're proposing to be paid 42,923. And in 1990, uh, amount, that is $17,000 and, uh, and so on. So when you get to 2030, you're proposing to be paid 51,252 in, uh, 2023, uh, numbers. And that is, uh, 21,265 in 1990 numbers. And actually, with inflation, you're back at, uh, 17,808 in 1990 numbers. Inflate, uh, inflation usually hovers around 3%. And, uh, even after pandemic, the last 20 years is probably going to, average is going to be around 3 or 4%. Uh, yeah. So on the amounts, I support you getting a pay raise. And, uh, you may think that you are, uh, that sitting on the council is a job. I don't think it's a job. I think it's more than that. It's public service. You may treat it as a job. Uh, but, um, you know, the, what I've been hearing over the last few years is that even when you leave the chambers, you're doing things even late into the night, maybe talking to a lobbyist or talking to law enforcement about what's going on in the city. Uh, so I just, I think it's a teaching moment for people that, uh, people need to get paid, uh, for their services. And, uh, on a annual basis, you should be asking at least 3% pay increase from your boss. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents?
Larry Store, 501-5 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. I'm against this one and also the one for the mayor. Because I, for the life of me, don't understand why we, the people, should be allowing you to set your salaries and things yourselves and that far ahead of time. You know, 2027, 2028, 29 and 30? I don't think that's very fair to the citizens of Omaha, the taxpayers. None of us get to do that. What makes a lawmaker that really doesn't have any business making law? You're supposed to enforce the law, ba, primarily. The power is not given to you, uh, I guess the founding fathers didn't take this into consideration. So we have to hold you accountable for this. So we have to hold you accountable for this. And I really don't want to guarantee to you that I'm gonna pay you that much money in 2027. I can't do anything about it because you probably already signed, sealed, and delivered it, voted on it. If you think it's a contractual thing, I guess, but I don't know that you have a union. I don't think it's a contractual thing, except with the American people, with the citizens of Omaha that elected you. Now, it's kind of unfair. I could yes, go to your office, I guess, Mr. Rowe, I think, and try to convince him of my case to convince all the rest of you. So it's one against one, and then it's one against seven. And that's not very fair. I think this ought to be up to the vote of the people, of the whole city, on a ballot. And a ballot that is canon by hand. Thank you.
Thank you. Other opponents?
My name is Eric Van Hunneck, 8154 Waller Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68122. Mr. Fester, thank you for your service. I'm a disabled vet, and sometimes I lose track of things. So if I go off track, please get me back on it. First, I want to commend you guys for being here. I know that it can be hard to be here when you're talking about things that you know you might get hammered for by someone on this end. And especially something like this, of you getting a pay raise. I'm rather embarrassed for you guys. I get a 2% raise annually for my disability. And as grateful as I am for that, I'm embarrassed about that. Because friends that I have that are able to work full-time and just work themselves to the bone, sacrificing their time with family, do not get that raise. Some have not gotten raises in years. The young gentleman who was up here first said that you should request a 10% raise or a 3% raise, whatever it is, from your employer. I know a friend of mine who asked for a pay raise, and their employer said, "Have the city increase the minimum wage." You ask government why they can't get a raise, they kick it back to the employer. So it is the old Potomac merry-go-round. I think that someone else should be voting for this for you instead of yourselves. It's like the foxes voting amongst themselves to get into the hen house. Government is always fast to give themselves pay raises. That's probably the one thing all Republicans and Democrats vote for. But it takes forever for other people like myself, my, my family, actually, and other friends of mine to get a pay raise. I am not into gambling. And, Mr. Fester, I am not encouraging any of you to do anything illegal. But I have $1 here. I see there's about 17 of you. I will have to go to the bank if more than one takes me up on it. I'll give you 101 odds right now. If you do not vote for a pay raise, I'll give you a dollar. If you do vote for a pay raise, give me $100. I could really use the money for my bills, and so could a lot of other people in this city.
Thank you. Any other opponents today? Seeing none, public hearings closed. Ms. Melton, you're recognized.
Yes, I, I thought it was important to actually just note the facts. Under our city charter, we are required, actually, in every term, to set the pay rate for the next term. So we're not setting our own, we're not giving ourselves a pay raise. And that's why it doesn't start until 2027. But under our city charter, we actually are required to set the pay for the mayor and the council. So we, we actually don't have a choice. We have to set our pay. We don't have to give a 3% increase. We could just keep it the same. So what, I did my own research. Hopefully, the council members all got this. I said, I know Mr. Doubting. I forwarded it to our Chief of Staff. And then he actually went and did the, the cost of living. So I looked at 20 cities that are around the same size as Omaha and are, it was Albuquerque, Cincinnati, Kansas City, Tucson, Wichita, Fort Myers, Milwaukee. I, I did though, a lot of those cities. Some bigger, some smaller. And actually, we are, the Omaha City Council has paid 26.5% less than all the other cities. I wanted to know what other city councils were making. The mayor actually is one of the lowest-paid mayors out of the top 50 cities. And so, and actually, even in this, the only one that was really, that I found that was significantly lower, which brings that down, there's kind of an anomaly of Colorado Springs. It only pays their council members $6,250. It was, I couldn't find one that low anywhere else in the country. But I kept it included in my list of averages, even though I think it was an anomaly, just to show that we are still well below the national average for a city our size. And again, the mayor is one of the lowest-paid and one of the only females. So I still have a little heartburn with that. But we are setting this salary for the next mayor and the next city council that the citizens of Omaha elect, which may not, I mean, all eight of us could be gone. It could be all eight new people. So we really aren't necessarily voting for us, voting for our own, own raise. And we are required to set the salary by our city charter. It's not a vote of the people. Our city charter doesn't allow it. So that's how we set it. That's how the charter dictates it. So if we want to change that, we would need to do a charter amendment. And we just had a charter, what, about a year ago? Less than a year ago? So if that's something that the citizens of Omaha want to be able to vote on every four years, then we would have to do a charter change, and you could bring that up during our next charter, next charter time. So I just, I just think facts are important. Everybody can say, "I want to vote on it." But if you want to, it's gotta be, you gotta follow our city charter. It's much like a constitution. And it's something that you want to follow, and if you don't like it, then you got to change it. So, um, so whether we vote for the 3% or not is really what we're voting on. We have to vote on the salary for the next set of council members and mayor.
Thank you. No further lights. Next item.
Item 58, an ordinance to amend Section 2-71 of the Omaha Municipal Code pertaining to the salary of the mayor.
Public hearing on number 58 is today. Proponents, please. Are you coming down to testify?
Louis C. Menace, 2709 Dew Avenue. Maybe you can amend it so she gets a 10% raise instead of a 3%, but 3% is good.
Thank you. Any other proponents?
Hello again, Ms. Johnson, and welcome back. My name is Eric Van Hunneck, 8154 Waller Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68122. Pete Fester, thank you for your service. Ditto number 57 on 58. Ms. Melton, I, I appreciate the numbers, but what you really have to do is put a percentage of what their income is to the poverty line in those cities. Yes, sure, may not make as much as those other cities. But when you bounce against the poverty line, it is not quite the number that you think it is. So I would just suggest that you double-check that. And honestly, I don't think the mayor deserves a pay raise. I don't think that if she gets a pay raise, she has to go home to her family and tell her kids that she can't make breakfast for them the next day. She won't be hurting for money, but a lot of other people will. And like I mentioned before, give the people of Nebraska a pay raise. Some of you may say, "Oh, well, we can't do that." I guarantee you, everybody probably has the mayor on speed dial and the spay, the, the mayor has the governor on speed dial. And the governor has the senators and the representatives on speed dial. But all it takes is the governor to raise the minimum wage here in Nebraska. And it won't take two years to debate it out and everything by the time they do it. Because they say, "Oh, we will give them 3% raise or whatever raise over the next five years." Well, by the time it gets to the next five years, then it's even lower than it was before. So when talking about money, please think about the little people. Because the little people are the ones that you represent.
Thank you. And thank you also for your service to our country. Any other opponents on number 58?
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. I'm also opposed to this for the same reasons, but I also want to say, in defense of myself and other citizens, other taxpayers, that we don't necessarily want to give you the idea you're in office perpetually. And you are disingenuous when you say that you're setting it for the next mayor and the next. Because some of you have political ambitions and intend to be running in those years. So you are setting perhaps Mr. Fester's salary for those years or Ms. Melton's salaries for those years. We all know that there's a movement to try and replace the mayor if she's ill or missing for five days or whatever, to try and take over the position of mayor. And oh, yes, you were trying to imitate the 25th Amendment of the United States Constitution, but doing it very poorly. But that Constitution says that we are, no matter which form of government we are under, the people are sovereign, not you. The people that elected you are sovereign, not you. Don't you get it?
Thank you. Any other opponents to 58?
Stanford Momarts, 1511 Farnham Street, 508. I'm not really an opponent of the pay raise for the council and mayor. I'm not necessarily a proponent. What I am an opponent of is this DAV getting 2%. I'm retired on disability. I'm looking for work that I can do. I can't stand, I can't lift heavy things. But I can, I'm an ace at detail work. And I'm looking for a job. But you know how much I got for my pay raise last year? I'm not even a vet. And if he can get only 2% while I get 8, there's something wrong with that. That's what I oppose. You guys work hard. I've heard for years how Omaha is at the lowest pay scale. And I want to tell you something about Milwaukee, my mother's hometown. Let them get two-colored people on that council, and those pay raises will plummet. They are the most racist town I know. I have cut off every relative I know from Milwaukee. So there's something going on there besides just greed. But thank you, guys, for the hard work you put into it and just the research you did on that issue alone.
Thank you. Any other opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Huck?
Thank you, Councilmember Fester. Can we get Councilmember Melton's findings read into the records so they'd be part of the record, part of the minutes? The findings she found on the mayor's weight wages?
Yes, yes, we can get that posted, and this is a vote next week. So that could be included on that agenda if we wish.
Yeah, if we can just get that in the minutes and acknowledge what, what those numbers are. That's all.
All right. Thank you. No further lights. Next item.
Item 59, an ordinance to accept the bid of Sandry Fire Supply LLC to provide fire hoses for the Omaha Fire Department.
Public hearing on number 59 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
One public hearing can be held for Items 60 and 61 relating to the Omaha Streetcar. Item 60, an ordinance to amend ordinance number 43220 to amend Article 2, authorizations and approvals. Item 61, an ordinance authorizing and approving the establishment of a master lease purchase program. Is communication in opposition?
Public hearings on Items 60 and 61 are today. We'll start with proponents, and I believe a overview by Jennifer Taylor in the Finance Department.
Good afternoon, Mr. President, members of the City Council. Jennifer Taylor, City Law Department. I'm going to try and be brief so that we have time for questions and can share additional information for the council. There's two items before you today in this public hearing. The first one is amendment to a previous authorization, which allows the city to seek a 40-year term as opposed to a 30-year term for the currently authorized lease purchase bonds. This does not obligate or guarantee the city to seek that term or that we will get that term, but it affords the city the flexibility to try to market the bond issuance with a 40-year term. Rejecting this amendment simply restricts the city's issuance to a 30-year term and nothing more. So all the city is asking for today is the opportunity and the flexibility to attempt to market a 40-year term for those particular bond issuances. The second item on the agenda is lease revenue issuance with terms that were specifically negotiated to benefit the city and to be privately placed with a specific buyer or buyers. Unlike bonds that are placed in the market, these have a guaranteed 40-year term and a favorable interest-only period. The intent is to sell them to specific buyers with, on these negotiated terms. Again, rejecting or denying this proposal would leave the city with less-than-ideal financing options, ultimately causing additional dollars to be spent on interest as opposed to project costs and additional plan-approved transportation projects and affordable housing. The goal with both proposals is to make the city's financing mechanisms as we start funding the streetcar obligations as fiscally responsible as possible, minimizing interest rates and associated costs and maximizing funds available to pay project expenses. The funding for the streetcar has been approved. We are simply reacting to the market to obtain the best financing terms possible, and that's what we ask for you to approve today. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Other proponents?
Good afternoon. Thank you. My name is Rick Rabchuk. My address is 120 South 31st Avenue in Omaha. I'm here in my capacity as Chief Financial Officer and Chief Investment Officer of Mutual of Omaha to support the adoption of this ordinance approving lease revenue bonds for the Omaha streetcar system. Just a few blocks from here, Mutual of Omaha is making a significant investment in downtown Omaha. We're building a new headquarters building that will be the tallest building in Nebraska and many surrounding states. We're excited by the development that this is occurring in downtown Omaha and look forward to bringing our associates to an inviting and dynamic urban core. The streetcar is an important part of this city's future economic development landscape, both downtown and along its route. The issue before the council today relates to the issuance of bonds for the development of the streetcar system. As an investment professional, I have extensive experience with bond packages similar to this one. And I've reviewed the structure of this bond package and believe that it is sound. Bonds such as this make up a portion of Mutual of Omaha's investment portfolio. Based on the solid structure of this bond package and the importance and of the, of funding that they will provide to the economic development associated with the modern streetcar system, I encourage the council to approve this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Other proponents?
Mr. President and members of the council, my name is Jason Lanahan, here on behalf of Lanahan Real Estate Company. My address is 17070 Wright Plaza. I'll just make a few quick points. I know we've been here for quite some time today. So when we all started talking about the streetcar, we called it economic development. That was the point of it, not necessarily transportation, but economic development. And by the chance somebody doesn't believe that theory today, I'm very proud to say that any one of us can walk down the 14th and Farnham and see what I'm going to call Exhibit A to this economic development theory, the tallest building that we've ever built in our great state. So we're all pretty proud of that. And I'll tell you, a big component to that Uh, we're all pretty proud of that, and I'll tell you, a big component to that was the streetcar. That's what unlocked it. That's what allowed this development to occur. The second piece, what I'd like to talk to you about, which I think is very important to this conversation and the bonds is. Is what this, what else this unlocks, and that is the redevelopment of Mutual's current campus. So basically from Blackstone to four eighty. Um, I'm excited to say that we are actively, my company is actively master planning that right now. And we look forward to some exciting announcements next year, um, from a sense of scale. If for a sense of economic impact, these construction efforts will equate to approximately double. The amount of investment that the current tower is, so that's jobs and taxes. Um, so we think that's pretty exciting, and the streetcar is what allows all of this to happen. Um, the final point I'd like to make real quick, um, and there are many facets to affordable housing, so I'm not suggesting this is a silver bullet, but. It is an important piece, um, that the streetcar allows us developers to build less parking. We are so overparked throughout this entire city. Um, it allows the parking garages that the city owns today to be connected with the streetcar. So if we can develop projects at a lower basis, it equals lower rents. If renter or homeowners, right, for lower purchase prices. Um, if someone is renting a unit and they don't need to park in the building, they can either. Park in an adjacent garage, which is cheaper, which is connected to the streetcar. Or perhaps the streetcar is connecting all the largest employers in our state or in our city. Um, maybe they don't need a car, and you know, it's not the silver bullet, but it's it's another piece. That will get us to where I think we all want to go. So with that, I appreciate your time and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Other proponents.
Louis, who managed twenty-seven oh nine Dewey Avenue. I support this because of the financial aspect, um, and I've been going to the. Street, uh, car authorities, monthly meetings, so I've been paying attention to the developments. And I've heard a lot of promises, a lot of platitudes. And we're still hearing them. At pre-meeting, I heard them, and I'm hearing them. Uh, to, um, this ti- during this time. That we're, um, this is what we want. This is what we want. This is what it's supposed to do. Right now, all you're doing is financing a construction project. Which is, uh, the streetcar along the route that has been identified. I heard some truth finally today, that this is a economic piece and not a transportation piece. Uh, if the, if this was a transportation piece to begin with, the spine would be. From the airport to downtown. That's, that'd be the spine. Then everything else is, um. And amenities. I, so these promises. That this is gonna bring economic development, different types of, uh, it'd benefit different districts. You know, I I'm, I'm gonna wait and see. So like the old Mutual of Omaha Tower. Is what it, what's happening into it? I assume it's gonna be repurposed for lots or condos or whatever. And then that would make sense on the density. The, you have the hospital, uh, the federal hospital that's going to be built at, uh, over at by near Saddle Creek. That makes sense to have the streetcar transport people from, uh, downtown. Midtown to the hospitals, or these would be medical professionals. And so forth, uh, because, all right, this is not, this is not for the community that we have today. This is, the streetcar is for the community that you want and a decade or so. Uh, and, uh, okay, fine, but. These new people are free to come to Omaha. And they're, they may come to Omaha with a vehicle, and then, so that goes out. The fact that you you're gonna have new people doesn't mean they're gonna be here vehicleless. You need, and you can't control that. You know, you're just gonna let the development go, uh, flow. And and there's other aspects, but you get my point. Like this, right now. You, i- it's a construction project a- and, uh, and that transportation piece. I'm still seeing, um, if it's gonna, uh, pan out. There there's a stop planned on. Twenty-sixth Street, so that's near. Um, uh, where I live, so I'm becoming biased to- towards the. Streetcar. I'm gonna use it, w- once the streetcar is there, but, uh. You, you've said it yourself, that there's a lot of people who don't want it. There's still a lot of public engagement to be had, so that this is something that. A variety of people uses it, not just the new people that aren't here today. Thank you.
Thank you. Other proponents.
Jennifer Krieger, Senior Vice President, Public Policy at the Greater Omaha Chamber, eight oh eight Conagra Drive, Suite four hundred, six eight one oh two. I have a letter today from Heath Mello to share with you. On behalf of the Greater Omaha Chamber of Commerce and our nearly three thousand members, I'm writing to express our strong support for the City of Omaha's. Ordinance authorizing and approving the establishment of a master lease purchase program for the construction and equipping of a modern streetcar system. This initiative is not only a significant step towards enhancing our city's transportation infrastructure. But also aligns seamlessly with our urban core strategic plan released in March twenty twenty-two. The introduction of a modern streetcar system in Omaha represents a transformative investment in our city's future. It is a visionary project that promises to revitalize our urban core, foster economic development, and enhance the quality of life for all residents. By facilitating easier and more efficient mobility, the modern streetcar system will encourage business growth. Attract talent and workforce and create job opportunities, thereby contributing significantly to the economic prosperity of Omaha. Our urban, our urban core strategic plan emphasizes the importance of sustainable and efficient urban transportation. As a cornerstone for economic development. The proposed streetcar system perfectly embodies this vision by offering an efficient and user-friendly transportation option. The project will be a catalyst for development in the urban core. Connecting key areas of the city and making Omaha a more accessible and attractive destination for businesses and tourists alike. Furthermore, the master lease purchase program presents a financially prudent approach to this ambitious project. It allows the City of Omaha to leverage its resources effectively. Ensuring that the project is not only economically viable, but also sustainable in the long term. The Greater Omaha Chamber recognizes the transformative potential of the modern streetcar system and its alignment with our strategic goals. We firmly believe that this project will play a crucial role in shaping the future of our city. Driving economic growth and enhancing the quality of life for our community. We commend the City of Omaha for its foresight and commitment to this project and offer our full support. We look forward to collaborating with the city and other stakeholders to make the vision of a modern, connected, and vibrant Omaha reality. Sincerely, Heath Mello, President and CEO.
Thank you. Other proponents.
I guess I'm the only one left. Stanford Momarts, still fifteen eleven Farnham, number five oh eight. I'm actually not doing this because I'm really fond of Mutual of Omaha. I'm very upset with them for. Destroying our great main library, W. Dale Clark. Of course, you guys consented to it, but, um. I am very much in favor of streetcars. The late nineteenth and early twentieth century. Every city in this country except San Francisco did a great disservice to their citizenry. By convincing them that buses would be a great savings over streetcars. They weren't, not in one single one of those cities. But now we have a chance, at least in Omaha, to start bringing back the streetcars and saving our great city some money. And once we get in what is proposed. We can start expanding that to cover the whole city and saving even more money. And it's an attractive thing, bring some tourism into the area. And so not only saving money, but bringing in money. I think it would be a fantastic thing to add to the charm of our city, to add to the income of our city. And, you know, if Mu is really committed to assuaging their guilt for destroying W. Dale Clark. They could pay for the streetcars, or at least kick in half of it or something like that. But I think it would be a good idea to approve this project and and start. I would love to see it be only a start. But to start bringing back a streetcar, a money saver and a money builder. For beautiful Omaha, our fair city, as they used to say, as you would know if any of you are big. Click and clack the Tappin Brothers fans. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none any opponents.
Anthony Cato, twenty-five ninety-six Crown Point Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska. I'm a, I'm not totally a a opponent, but I am a fact finder. And one of the facts is that a lot of talk has been talked that the citizenry of Omaha wanted the streetcar. Let me remind most of you, some of you were on the board, most of you, I know five of you were not. It was voted down two to one unanimously. It was put to the voter of the people, and it was voted down, and I kind of know why. And I'm gonna give you a bit of a his- history lesson. The first one, Turner Park. Turner Park was in a part of the city of Omaha, huge part. But how did Mutual of Omaha get a hold of the property? How did it get a hold of three square city blocks? Closed off a main city street, Thirty-first Street is no longer in existence in the city of Omaha, thanks to. The project of Mutual of Omaha who wanted to have it, to build their project. To expand Mutual of Omaha, the teletrip building, their other insurance, their travel energy building. All thanks to Mutual of Omaha, who's made a lot of money off the name of Omaha. Wild Kingdom, that ring a bell? Next lesson. The Clarendon Building at Thirtieth and Farnham. Mutual of Omaha advocated that they had to have that historic building. For what we don't know, because today. Almost eight and a half years later, maybe even longer, it's an empty lot. They also took half of the businesses on Farnham from twenty-ninth to thirtieth. Now, we have proposed that they're gonna invest this big project, economic development, no problem. Build the largest building in in Omaha and in this state. I'm all for it. But I'm not for the fact that you keep depriving citizens, telling them that what you want and the city council caves. To them. If you want a streetcar, you pay for it, you build it. And then, don't try to incorporate the state of Iowa, city of council, but Potawatomi County and saying, oh, you know what? Because we're gonna draw the line and maybe run it over to your area. But not expand it to South Omaha or North Omaha. Nah, you're selling us a pipe dream. Let's not be delusional anymore. This was to cave to big business who wanted it. And then you tried to sell it to the University of Nebraska Medical System. Yeah, it could be, it could be beneficial, no doubt about it. But don't sit there and keep telling this lie that you want, everybody wanted a streetcar, when you know for the facts. It was voted down. It was not a, it was not approved by the people for the people, and if you want to talk about transportation. Well, then let's go back to that orbit system. That's been the biggest joke of the city this thus far. It runs from downtown all the way out to the West Roads. But it doesn't reach the pe- the communities of La Vista, Papillion, Bellevue. Hell, it don't even come out to North Omaha, let alone South Omaha. We have a great revenue base. We have the College World Series here every year. We have the, one of the best zoos in the world. We have plenty of tourists who come here. We have NCA basketball coming here. We've been here three times. We've had other sporting events. We have people come from St. Louis, Kansas City, Chicago, and elsewhere. But let's not sell this bullshit excuse. That we need a streetcar in Omaha, Nebraska to make it better than what it was. Because if that's the case, then we need to scrap the whole transportation system and start over. And nobody wants to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents?
Larry Store five oh one five Lafayette Avenue Omaha six eight one three two. Thank goodness there's a little more common sense in the room today. I remember that. That vote. But you, they can always amend whatever they do, you know, the next week they can amend it. But. We don't need a streetcar. You can't build everything to make people come here or to move here. You don't have to be like Kansas City. If you want to attract people from outside, let's have a river, couple of different river, uh. Big river boats that can travel from New Orleans. Far to North Dakota and back and drop people off here, there, maybe four or five of them. Then you can have a trolley system. To cart people from outside around to all over Omaha, but it doesn't have to be on rails or wires. Uh, how long is this gonna be modern? It might not be modern tomorrow. The way things are progressing today. So a a lease purchase plan, I, I don't know, I forget my business law from college days, but. A lease purchase implies that you have an option there to lease it or purchase it after maybe so much of a time. So how long is it gonna be before you come back and ask us to swallow the purchase price? And I can't for the life of me figure out what you're gonna demolish downtown to generate new development. You know, it's pretty packed as it is now, is it not? What are you gonna tear down to attract new development with, or is everybody gonna get TIF financing for remodeling their buildings? And is it them that are gonna pay the taxes for TIF? Or me, because I use the bus? I still drive a lot and I see the big Orbit boss, uh, I I like to call it, uh, the the whale, uh. I forget the whale's name, but. In the early morning hours. I see very few, if any, people getting on or off the buses at about five, six different stops. And there are stop, you know, every, what do you have to walk four or five blocks to get to the next stop? But I don't see anybody, but they stop at every one of them. And then they try to tell us, well, we have this money stops. That generate, it says we're getting riders. Excuse me. A riderless stop is not valid, and we'll probably have the same thing with a streetcar. All this affordable housing, streetcar, everything else. I remember when you blew up all those buildings downtown, Jobber's Canyon. Could have been a lot of affordable apartments there. Could have been a lot of attractive fro- retail shops and businesses in those buildings. But no, we let a mon- a monstrous corporation, Togris, end up blowing it up. And then what happened? They left town. Thank you.
Any other opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Hardy.
Thank you, Mr. President. A while back, when when the financing plan for this project was being contemplated. One of the components that was, um, talked about was the ability for private placement bonds. And at the time, there was discussion about, you know, wh- whether or not there would be interest. From local companies or organizations, employers to step up and and make such a commitment. So this, this ordinance, or sixty-one at least, sixty makes it. So that we can offer terms of up to forty years rather than what we previously approved to for thirty years. To maybe make it more attractive to those organizations that are interested in in making such an investment. And then sixty-one sets up the, the, if you will, the the program for that. And we have, um, early on, it was discussed that. You know, Mutual of Omaha, who would be kind of at one end of the route. Uh, with its new, uh, eight hundred thousand foot facility. Would be interested in in doing that, and that's exactly what we see here today, is that Mutual of Omaha has certainly expressed their interest. In in making that kind of, kind of an investment. So having said that, I was, um, I was gonna ask Mr. Curtis or Ms. Taylor if they wanted to talk about. about one of the reasons, or some of the reasons, why we're doing a private placement and the benefits of the terms that we can maybe have from that as it relates to interest rates. So I don't know if Steve wants to talk about that, or...
Steve Curtis, City Finance. One of the options that we get with a lease purchase, with a privately placed lease purchase bond is a much better interest rate, including tax-exempt interest rate, which we wouldn't necessarily get if we had placed a bond out in some other format. This allows us to take advantage of the city's best possible rate versus, in this interest-rate environment, what would probably be a lot higher.
Oh, I thought you were gonna throw some of those rates out, but...
Well, I mean, I can tell you where I thought they might be today. We're probably somewhere in the mid-fours on this product, and it'll depend on the pricing and the particular day that it's priced. So, I mean, we can all guess, but it'll be priced on that specific day that we go out to market. The lease purchase, not taking advan...or privately placed bonds that aren't taking advantage of the lease purchase option, I'm gonna say would be 8% plus and maybe a lot higher.
Okay. Which means what we're really trying to do here is, we're also trying to be good stewards of the taxpayers' dollars by looking at other funding mechanisms that would be lower in cost to the project...lower project cost, rather than paying, I'll use your example in round terms, 8% versus 4% on the money. That's certainly a savings to the project cost, is it not?
Steve Curtis, City Finance, yes. It would be quite a bit of savings. It allows us to take the money that would otherwise go off to, you know, you pick your favorite large town, New York, Chicago, and go away as interest. It allows a lot of those funds to stay here, continue to work on things like bike lanes or affordable housing, or some of the other things that are in the redevelopment plan.
Right. So by being that good steward of the taxpayers' money and looking for lower ways to fund the project, the amount of TIF being collected still would be the same regardless of how those bonds are issued, whether you're paying it at 8% rather than 4%. The TIF, the extra TIF then generated by the projects within the areas of influence and the...and those abutting, or the other, the smaller area of influence further out, those same revenues would then possibly be available for, as you said, affordable housing, other infrastructure improvements for the city as a whole.
That's correct. Remember that there is a fairly large TIF revenue stream that's been validated by various entities, including MuniCap out of Baltimore. And that same funding source will pay for whichever mechanism we use. It's just a matter of putting this together in the most efficient way that allows us to keep as much money working here as possible.
Right. The other thing I wanted to point out is, this is the public hearing today. I was scheduled to be out of town next week, and so I won't be here to actually vote on this issue. But I would like to say publicly for the record that if I were able to be here next week and vote on this when it's considered, that I would be voting in favor of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Melton, you're recognized.
Yes, if I could call Ms. Taylor back up. Jennifer Taylor, City Law Department.
Jennifer, and you made the comment, but I think it's worth noting, because both proponents and opponents, when I was listening, were talking about whether or not they wanted the streetcar, the benefits of the streetcar, and then why they didn't want the streetcar. And so I just want to be clear what we're actually voting on, because this council could vote the whole thing down. We could vote no on this. That doesn't stop the streetcar, and in fact, it doesn't even stop the bonding. It's just, a year ago, we had voted on certain terms for the bond, and now you're just asking to change the terms, which are more beneficial, could result in a lower interest rate, could result in interest-free payments for 10 years, and could result in an extension of, instead of 30 years, 40 years. So if we vote no, it just means that the bonds will get released, or the terms will be the 30-year potential terms and a higher interest rate due to the current market than what was last year.
Correct.
So there is no way with this vote to say, no, we're gonna stop the...stop the streetcar with this.
That is correct. In addition, pursuant to the agreements that we have with the Streetcar Authority and the redevelopment plan, once this council approved those bond ordinances last December, we committed to moving forward with the streetcar. That decision has been made. Those funding mechanisms have been put in place, and you are correct. All we're doing here is we're simply looking at the current market, and we've presented the council with a financing option and mechanism that is far more fiscally responsible than other options available to us. If we are not afforded this option, we will use some of those less fiscally responsible options.
And this also, with these terms, it also may attract more local investment in the bonds. And I really do appreciate Rick becoming in Mutual of Omaha, because I think what Mutual is saying, we are not only making the big investment in the building down here, but also in the urban core with the potential purchase of these bonds. And so when you're talking about selling bonds in a market, obviously, the market changes. That's why we can't get Mr. Curtis to say exactly how much this is gonna change the interest rate, because it depends on the day. And so this is gonna give the city more flexibility to get better rates. That means, also, I think when I heard Councilman Harding say a better steward of the taxpayer money, what it is, these bonds can also be used for other things. So once the streetcar is paid off by the TIF and the developers, then there is still additional revenue that's created from this, which would then, that revenue can be used for bike lanes and for other public infrastructure projects outside of just the streetcar project, correct?
Correct. So you've identified two issues there. The first being, the private placement issuance that we've put together with the assistance of Mutual's Investment Desk, as well as others, puts together a program that we can then go actually offer to other local investors to privately place bonds in a similar fashion. It guarantees certain terms that are beneficial to the city that actually help us finance the project much more economically. Because we can finance the project more economically this way, we are spending less of those revenues that come in, as Mr. Harding said, regardless. The revenue that comes in from that development, provided that the streetcar is built, because that's what generates that development, those revenues will come in and they are the same no matter what. It's how we spend them. If we spend them more fiscally responsibly, there's more revenue to be spent, that revenue that can then be invested in additional projects, in projects in addition to the streetcar.
And this isn't the first time we've necessarily done this, so we have...the city has a little history. Can you just briefly...just briefly remind everyone of some of the other projects that have been done using this type of funding?
This is a type of financing mechanism we use to actually build a lot of city projects. We use this for libraries, for police stations, for parking facilities, but specifically, it's a mechanism that we use to build both the Ball Field and the Associated Hilton Hotel with the CHX Convention Center. So those are both projects that were built through this kind of financing mechanism. There is a dedicated revenue stream that is intended to repay the debt service on these bonds. It does so, so then it does not impact any other city monies.
And we did so successfully with the Convention Center, correct?
Correct.
And in fact, I don't know if this is still true, but about five to six years ago, when we looked around the country, actually Omaha was one of the few cities in the country whose convention center actually operates profitably. The majority of cities, actually, their convention centers are in the red, and actually, the cities are okay with it, because they consider it kind of the cost of doing business, because they still get so much tax revenue from heads-on beds, and the sales tax, and restaurant and hotel tax, and all of that, that it's worth it to them to actually kind of take a little bit of a loss on their convention center in order to attract...in order to attract people into their city. But Omaha, actually, we've done very well in those productions, and I want to say it might be because we do take a very conservative look. We don't want to set the expectations too high, so we're reaching to meet them. And I think so far, with the current investment that we've already had, and especially with Mutual, where are we sitting now even from what we anticipated a year ago?
I would say with the projected development on Mutual's campus and the current development that we have already in the pipeline, we are at least 50 to 60% of what we needed to have in order to fully finance the streetcar. So the additional projects that we know are coming on that haven't been announced yet, I think we'll finish that off, and we're in a very good position. So you are correct. We have evaluated this project with a very conservative fiscal analysis. We are already well on our way to meeting all of the required investment levels that would get us to where we need to be. So that conservative analysis has put us in a place where we are comfortable saying that we know the revenue stream will be there to pay the debt service on these bonds, just like we did when we did the Ball Field, just like we did when we did the Hilton and the Convention Center. We evaluated that revenue stream, we knew it would come in, and we knew it would be sufficient to pay the debt service. It's the same thing here.
And I guess I kind of look at this as, and I have to look at what I'm voting on. You can't get distracted by whatever, by kind of the noise, because I have to actually focus on what this vote is. And this vote is actually just about taking advantage of a better market and just changing some of the terms for how we're issuing the bonds, which actually will make them more lucrative or to other local investors for purchasing the bonds, which I would rather, you know, interest payments stay local. So I'm actually doing, when we're paying the bonds back off, that interest in that investment is staying in our city. So that's not just, I think, and that kind of expounds upon what Councilman Harding had said, you're keeping that, even the investors who are getting their interest back, if we can get more local investors, then that interest in that, that, those revenues that we're paying the bonds off stays here. And so a vote no on this is not saying I don't agree with the streetcar. A vote no on this would be saying, I don't care, I kind of just want a political somehow pat on the back from somebody that's against it. But in my opinion, that's not governing. Sometimes governing's hard, and not everybody always agrees with you, but you do have to look at what you're voting on and say, is this in the project's best interest and the city as a whole's best interest? So whether you like the streetcar, hate the streetcar, this vote is just about the financing. And if we don't vote on this, then it's just gonna be a higher interest rate, and it'll just cost more for that project.
Correct.
Okay. But I just, it's just, I think that's very important. And what I didn't know until today was, or hadn't thought about, really was the additional monies, that the additional revenue that comes in above and beyond what the bonds and the streetcar project is, that those will be revenues that can be used for public infrastructure and for additional infrastructure for the city.
Correct.
So...
So it is incumbent upon Finance Department and city staff to look at the market and to bring options to this council that are in the best interest of the city from a fiscal perspective, and that's what we're doing today.
Well, thank you for your efforts. I know the vote is not until next week, and so I may have additional questions for you between now and then, but I do appreciate all the information that you did provide, an extremely detailed memo explaining everything, and I thought that that was very helpful ahead of today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bagley, I believe your light's on?
Yes, thanks, Mr. President. Councilmember Melton covered pretty much all the ground I wanted to touch on, so thanks for doing that. We saved a little time, Councilmember Melton. It was mentioned by Councilmember Harding that we're stewards of the taxpayer dollars, and I'll take a minute just to reiterate again what was said by Councilmember Melton, that you confirmed, Jennifer, that the city has used, utilized this tool of the lease purchase bonds. And again, name the things that we use that on.
We've used it to finance libraries, parking facilities, police and fire facilities. We've used it specifically to finance both the Ball Field and Hilton Hotel and similar types of facilities.
Okay, thanks. It really is worth noting that again, that the city has used this taxpayer, this tool to be fiscal stewards for the taxpayers, and this is a better interest rate is a reason we are utilizing this, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And again, it reinvests back in the whole project that there is more money available. It's, you and I had talked this morning, I like your lessons, that you walk me through things slowly. If I want to redo a mortgage on my house, you obviously want to lock in three years ago like I should have, if I wanted to refinance it four and change, or around four. If I want to do that today, it's at eight. I don't have the option to go back to do it at four, but this is a tool that the city is using where you can lock in not to save 4% like I wanted to on my mortgage today, but it does utilize a tool to have a lower interest rate, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Thanks again for the meeting this morning and being here today. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Mr. Hug.
Hi.
Hi.
It's like, it's like we've been here all day. I just want to clarify something that did, was said at pre-council. If there's any excess on this bond issuance, it could be spent for bike lanes, but also could be spent for affordable housing, correct?
Correct. You know, this bond issuance, what we have are the excess edulorm tax revenues that are generated by the development that comes along the route that is a function of the streetcar investment. As those revenues come in, those revenues will be used to pay for the bonds that are issued to fund the project. As those revenues come in, there are additional projects in our redevelopment plan that are identified to use those revenues. So once the streetcar is built and has been paid for, additional tax financing revenues that are generated can be used for additional transportation projects, other development in the core, including affordable housing.
Okay. That's all I wanted to hear you say for the record. Thank you.
Thank you. There's no further lights. Madam Clerk.
Non-action items, item 62 through 98, do not require public hearing or city council consideration at this meeting, but will be placed on a future agenda for public hearing and/or vote. The reason for non-action is noted after the item on the agenda, as well as the date the item is expected to appear on the agenda for consideration.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion, a second. Roll call.
Harding, Hug, Johnson, Melton, Rowe, Bagley. Mr. President?
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Meeting is adjourned at 4:46.